Good morning. Start the roll call, Councilmember Bana.
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis is absent. Councilmembers Zapata.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez is absent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Members of the Council. This is your meeting. One of the things that I heard from all of you is time management of your meetings. And the way to ensure that is to start on time, stay on topic, and exactly 1:59, I'm going to say, "Thank you very much," and I wish you a happy evening. That's the way we're going to do this one, unless you plan to stay later than 2:00. You need to decide that. But start on time, stay on time, stay on point, and respect everybody's time and end on time. You did not invite me here to preach to you, and I will try to contain myself. But I heard so much about that issue. We've had a roll call. And you show us, here is how I am proposing we move through this agenda. We start it on time, and we're going to do our welcome and introductions, and then at 10:15, we'll review and modify the agenda as you deem appropriate. We'll talk for about 30 minutes about the definition of goals and objectives, so we're clear about how we're looking at those. We talked about strategies, at least the mayor mentioned that, at the council meeting, and we can get to that. That would come underneath your objectives if you can get that far in this meeting. And then discussion of the goals submitted by the mayor and the members of the council. So I'm expecting that by 12:00, we will have accomplished all of that. We will then take a break, and then 10 minutes later, we come back, and there is a ranking of the top five goals. What I plan to have you do at that point, after we've discussed the goals that you submitted, we're going to give you your voting dots, and I'll ask the staff to go around and tally those up. We'll see which ones emerge to the top and talk about those top five. If, in your wisdom, you decide that we absolutely have to have this sixth goal, this is your meeting, it's your council, you can do that. My advice, though, if the goals list gets too long, you aren't going to be able to remember all of your goals, and you ought to be able to remember them week after week. Here are the ones that we decided on, and are we making progress on them. And then at 1:00, we start the development of the objectives. If we can get to strategies, we'll do that, too. And those will be based on your top five goals. We have public comment, next steps, final comments, and we will adjourn at exactly 2:00. So that's the proposed agenda. I introduced myself to you at your last council meeting, and I think that the audience knows all of you. I should just tell them in one sentence who I am. I am Henry Gardner. I was city manager of Oakland for a long time, some may say too long. I have been a financial advisor, investment banker. I was executive director of the Association of Area Governments. I facilitated the council discussion five years ago. I can't remember now. And Shasa asked if I would do it again, and so that's why and how I am here. With that, any introductory comments from anybody? And B, my professor used to say, succinct. Any introductory comments? Councilmember Robinson. Any comments you want to make, opening comments? Member Jimenez, Councilmember McGlaughlin. Mr. Mayor.
Hi. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I can't tell from here. I want to apologize for showing that play. I was in the other place. I didn't realize we were meeting here, so my apologies.
You are forgiven.
And so I really don't know what we're, what opening comments.
Any you want to make, part of your welcome comments, introductions, and...
About the agenda?
About anything you want to talk about.
Okay, yeah, well, I was...
You have one minute.
Okay, the goals. The goals are a bit confusing to me, and I think that we need to go over them again so that we can make them more succinct.
We'll be doing that. Yes. Thank you for that comment. Councilmembers Zapata.
Just good morning, and I'm excited, and so are the residents, excited that we're getting together and goal planning and coming up with the future of the next couple of years. Thank you.
And Councilmember Bana.
Thank you for the opportunity. I think it's very important, actually, for us to build a team. We don't know each other very well, and we need to know our goals and align them in a way that we can work together, align our efforts, and have the most success for the city. So I'm very excited and happy about this opportunity, and I really appreciate it. Thank you, and thank all my fellow council members and the mayor. My only suggestion and comment is that we may want to group the goals together. For example, in my mind, we have generating revenue and economic development goals together, public safety goals together, and quality of life issues together.
You will have the opportunity to do that. Back to Councilmember Robinson.
And to get my thoughts together. So I am hoping that it's going to be clear that these are not all the things that we talked about.
Oh, no, these are not.
Right, and that they're not all goals. Some of them are objectives.
That is correct.
Okay, so just making sure.
Yes. Thank you for that comment. I received additional information. I interviewed each of you, and I took the mayor's comments from the introduction to the proposed budget. In addition to that, three of you sent me extensive comments, Vice Mayor McGlaughlin, Councilmember Jimenez, and Councilmember Robinson. I went through all of the interview notes. I took the additional information that three of you sent to me and tried to organize those under broad topics. Several of you, we had robust conversation about issues that really are not so much goals. There was a lot of concern about where we are on a number of our projects, but those weren't expressed in terms of goals. There were questions and comments about processes, how your meetings are conducted. I have captured all of that, and I'm going to run through that, but those didn't make it to this list. The goals need, well, first of all, would you like to make any adjustments to this schedule, or would you like more clarification about what it is that we plan to do when we get to these topics? Mr. Mayor, did you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I was hoping that we wouldn't have to spend so much time on goals. Looking at the list here, I think we're going to have to spend a lot more time, as Councilmember Bana suggested, several of these need to be grouped together.
And you will do that when we go through this process. For example, housing came up a lot, homelessness came up a lot.
Excuse me, I wasn't finished. And so when the goals were written up, you know, at the last council meeting, when we were suggesting how this would go, I suggested large bucket items, you know, for instance, homelessness. Homelessness would include increasing house supply, tenant protections and rental. It would also include create paths to homeownership, increase affordable housing. It would include expand tenant eviction services, assistance. Those are all, those aren't goals, those are objectives, ways to achieve reduction of homelessness.
Absolutely.
So for us to have to do that, instead of just dealing with the goal of homelessness, I think, a lot of time, because it's also true of other things here, and goals that we had suggested aren't here, which means that we're going to have to discuss, you know, putting new goals on.
And I have tried to put those up here, one under discussion of the goals that you submitted. And here they are here. There is some, one redundancy, as you correctly point out. When you put up the broad categories, a lot can come under that. In fact, a lot of what you said, some people would say, "Put all that under housing." You may not want to do that. You may say, "I want homelessness to be a major goal all by itself," but that's part of the discussion. Councilmember Bana.
I wonder, in order to make this most beneficial, useful, and effective,
Yes.
decide that this is about goals, and hopefully, we will have a retreat to talk more about how we can work towards those goals with specific plans and specific items, and the budget, and the agenda in our minds and everything. We don't have a city council. On May 30th, maybe we can have it as a retreat to continue after goal sitting, have a retreat and work more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments with respect to modification of the agenda or clarification of the agenda before we get into the next item? And to get back to the councilmembers, the mayor's comments about definition of goals, and there is no definitive answer to that, and definition of objectives, and definition of strategies, and how the strategies then support the objectives and how those support the overall goals, I think. Vice Mayor McGlaughlin.
Yes, so I can't see everything this way, but I, is something about shoreline issues on here? Or I know that was one of my issues, and I think you have them in attachment three, something about it, as priorities, not considered goals. So what does, where would, if it's a priority, it should fit into a goal, right? Where would that fit into?
Well, let's take an example, and I'm not sure which one you had in mind. But let's say, for example, that a priority is to clean up the industrial waste along the shoreline.
Okay.
That can be either a priority or a goal. As a goal, you would say, "We need to clean up 20% of the industrial waste along the shoreline over the next 30 to three years." That would be a goal.
A goal, I see.
Well, it could be a goal. I can't hear you. Your mic is not good. Yeah, your mic is not good.
Yeah, it's stuck. You want to use the mic here?
Yeah, so when I was thinking of goals, I mean, of goals, I was thinking of large buckets, you know, for instance, shoreline, that would be a goal, you know, anything to do with shorelines would be a goal, you know. So what you said is more of an objective, because objectives have particular expectations.
Can we launch into the discussion of the definition of goals and objectives? Goals are generally regarded as that which is measurable. To say that we're going to clean up the shoreline, how do you measure that? We say we're going to clean up the shoreline by doing whatever we're going to do by a time that you can come back and say, "Was progress made on that?" A goal is to reduce crime. And if that's a goal, you're going to reduce crime by what? We're going to reduce crime by 20% in the next year. That's the goal. An objective might be, and we can talk about that, what the goals are, but generally, goals are measurable. You should be able to go back and say, "We said we were going to reduce crime by 20%. Did we do it?" We're going to decrease homelessness amongst youth in two years, by 30%. Did we do it? Yes.
So just want to adjust what you're saying and add something to it, and to say that good goals are measurable, but goals in general are usually not objectives, but there's strategies to reach those goals, right? So you can have a bad goal, which is a big bucket that says, you know, "We'd like to reduce homelessness." That's a bad goal, not because reducing homelessness is bad, because it's not measurable. So I just wanted to make that distinction. I think that there's some things on our list that it would probably do us a lot of good to take the things kind of off of the table who are in this stuff for now, that are clearly objectives and not goals. And so I would like to put forward, like, an example, and...
Pick one of yours.
Pick one of mine.
You know, I'm kidding.
Well, I actually don't even think many of these things are not what I said, so...
I have your list, though.
So I had, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to see.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It's hard to see on the edge.
Oh, she says it's also in the binders. What's on the walls is also in the binders? But you're up now. You want to go to the board?
All right, so... So some of, yeah, so it's hard to see.
Well, you're searching. Councilmember Jimenez, back to Councilmember Robinson.
You haven't clarified the relationship between goals and priorities.
Yeah. So we were having the discussion of a definition of a goal, a definition of objectives, and I don't want us to get too mired in that.
For instance, funding for the new library.
Yes.
It's a great strategy. It's something you do in order to have a new library, but it's not a goal in and of itself, right? It's something that you do in order to reach your goal, which is to revitalize the library or to improve public services or to improve public infrastructure.
That is certainly one way of approaching it. Some would say a goal is to build a new library by year 2028. And then you put the objectives under how you're going to do that, and what are your strategies going to be? And a strategy would be, you're going to seek grant funding from the state, you're going to seek grant funding from foundations, there may be wealthy individuals who are concerned about libraries, but however you want to approach that, as long as we are clear of what is most important to you and how we state those in terms of goals. That's the primary thing, because then that sets the stage for all the stuff that needs to come underneath it. Is that, does that work for you? This is your meeting.
I think we need to at least start from scratch on the goals, because this, to weed through what is written up there will require more time than just discussing goals.
But starting from scratch is going to take even more time, with all due respect.
Well, I don't think so, because we've thought about it. We know what our goals are, and it seems that some of our goals are up there, but not all of them. Yes, go ahead.
So I'd like to propose a process for us to arrive at goals. I think that it would probably be quicker if we all could be really disciplined, to have no explanations, but if we could offer what our top five goals are, and then we could record those, and then see where there's connections in between them, when, you know, where we're saying the same thing, you know, because I believe we, some of we have crossover in our goals, and we can consolidate the goals where there's crossover, and then we could get to a point where we can have a unique list of goals, and we can vote on them with those dots.
What I have suggested and haven't gotten to yet is that at the point where you have discussed the goals that you submitted, and if your goal is not up there, you want to put it up there, we add it. After we've discussed that, you then get five votes. We talked about this at the council meeting. And you take your five dots, and you put them next to the goals that you think are the most important.
I think what we're trying to say, though, Mr. Gardner, is that the way, the way that they're expressed
Yes.
is they don't express the way that we're thinking of our goals.
Okay.
And so it will be difficult for us to vote on these goals, because they're not expressing the way that we want to capture our goals. And I think I'm correct in that.
Correct. Then in terms of how we proceed, how would you, again, this is your meeting. This, I can't say that enough. This is your meeting, and I want to be respectful of your expectations and your process. So Councilmember Jimenez.
I think I agree with the process that Councilmember Robinson is proposing to just say, name the goals that we want, each of one have, in the way that we want to express them, and then after that, have the process of what you are proposing, which is have a discussion, get the top five, and then after this top five, then get some objectives, like how we are going to achieve these goals with kind of like more, more kind of like, not detail, detail, but just kind of like see how
Broadly.
broadly, how we are going to achieve it. So I propose that, instead of the discussion of goals submitted by us, that we have that time to, since right now, to that time, to really go over the goals right now, kind of like, as Councilmember Robinson is proposing.
I want to be clear that I'm understanding what's being proposed. So are you proposing not to review the list that you gave us? And if not, are you proposing that we start a new sheet, and you list your goals? Or a combination of the two? And what I thought was, review what you gave us, and then add whatever is not up there, and then discuss it, and then try to rank them. Councilmember Willis. You're not mic'd. You are.
Yes, I'm to assume that the list that you gave us, that we gave you, is on one of these slides coming up, correct?
It is, and it's also on the walls, so you can walk around and see them, too.
Yeah, I'm, me personally, I'm interested in just seeing what everybody has to say, just to see where there's alignment or where there's a goal where I might be interested in dropping to prioritize something else, because that's been my curiosity, just wondering, what are all the things that we listed? Is there anything missing? Is anything we're committed to, and just breaking it down from there?
Would it work for you if I do this, if I just run through what you gave us, and then you talk about whether or not, Mr. Mayor?
That's, we're spending time on issues that have been segregated into objectives.
Right.
And so to talk about, so we would be talking about some goals from different points of view. And so we would be giving some goals more priority than other goals, especially goals that aren't.
I'm not clear with what you want to do.
I think what we want to do is literally go down the line, and hear only the five goals from everyone, so we can hear it from each other.
That's right, yes, okay.
And I think that this is not, it doesn't capture what we talked about good enough.
Is everybody okay with that? That can move this process along, so we'll start with you, Councilmember Robinson.
Awesome.
Is there agreement, is there consensus around that? Okay.
And so...
And we'll try to record.
Great, that's perfect. So with imperfect expression, like, this isn't wordsmithed. So my first goal was in increasing access and quality of housing. And I'm not going to go into detail, I'm not going to go into objectives, I'm just going to hit the goals.
Okay.
The next one was...
Access and quality of housing.
Access and quality of housing arrangement.
Yes.
And quality of housing.
The next goal is a big, under the big bucket of economic development, strengthen cost recovery, strengthen business development.
We need to slow down for the recorder.
I'm sorry, let me say it more succinctly. Actually, one of the residents wrote this, and she just said, "Increase revenue for the city." I think that that is a great bucket.
And that appeared on almost everybody's list.
Yeah. And then, it's easy to write, too. The next one is improve quality of life and community health. A little vague, but the way I defined it, we'll go into objectives later.
That's good, that's good.
Community health. Improve public safety. Yeah, the last one is strengthen the city's internal infrastructure to improve services and workplace environment.
Do we have a second person who can transcribe? Because I think this is, it'll speed it up, and maybe we can start writing on the walls.
Internal infrastructure to improve services and workplace environment.
Sorry, just put it over there. Yeah, just put it over there.
Okay, and I can go back and talk about the other stuff.
Okay. I'm going to see if we can get a second transcriber, because we want to get your thoughts up here and do it sufficiently. Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you, and I think like I have some similarities. I don't, um, let me see.
I suggest if any of us have the same goal, can we just do a plus one and then only add a goal if it's unique?
Yeah, or kind of like as in the goal, kind of like slash, yeah. I think like, and community, I think like, I don't know if increased access of quality housing, I am just trying to see back, because one of my goals also is to really, like, to improve or reduce homelessness, so maybe increase access, quality of housing, plus just kind of like housing and homeless, like, so we can...
Yeah, you can, if you want, yeah, we'll do it that way.
And maybe in the increased revenue, I will kind of like slash, just kind of like increase economic development, it's really big.
Increase economic development?
Yes, just kind of, yeah, so... And I think, yeah, so, thank you.
We can come back. I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you say five.
No, but the fives are there.
All right, I'll make sure.
Yeah, I am just trying to think how, in these goals that are there, how the objectives that I have fit, and I think like with these, I could actually...
Okay, and as others talk, you may, we'll come back, we'll come back.
And I want to take more time.
Okay. Vice Mayor McGlaughlin.
Yes, I would say most of mine fit into these five as well, except, so let me, you could add another plus on the housing, I think, as long as we have homelessness in there, and of course, we also want the regular, permanent, affordable. Also, infrastructure capital needs. Is that, is that the fifth one?
Do we have that up there?
Strengthen the city's internal... No, no, no.
Well, we should probably add that as a separate one.
It's down number five.
Oh, you have it there? I don't think that's up there.
Strengthen the city's...
Oh, well, strengthen the city's internal infrastructure.
Yeah, so I actually included the infrastructure one. It was a subcategory, and you can, if it doesn't work for you, make another one, but I, and maybe, maybe it would be better, so I had it under quality of life and community health, as improved public infrastructure and services, communication about existing services and infrastructure as well.
Well, I think some of the things that, maybe we'll just put it as a separate one, infrastructure capital needs, because it includes everything from, you know, local road safety plan to park bathrooms and lighting and such, so it might...
Okay, all right, we can come back and see how those might be combined.
We just, our categories, we get the same one.
We can always, like, we can find a way... Find better wording.
We'll be working on that. Vice Mayor.
Okay, and I would say on the economic development, internal revenue, economic development, and workforce development, maybe add that onto that.
I think we will, we'll change internal revenue. I think it's increased revenue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't want internal revenue. We got enough of them.
Increased revenue
They read your letter, too.
Which includes economic development, and just say job, economic and job development. How's that?
Okay, all right.
It's easy to say. And then my last one would, that's different, would be shoreline issues.
Okay. All right, and we can come back. Mr. Mayor, you want to be last? Would you like to be last? You want to go down? You want to be last? Councilmember Zapata.
Sorry, I've been trying to follow up what was in there. I think we already have public safety. I'm not sure this will be a subcategory now, I'm just going to read them, so improve, beautify our streets and our city.
That can go on, I think your quality of life issue. Is that okay? Go there?
Yeah, this, I had it, I had it under, and my mic isn't working. It's just fine under infrastructure and capital needs, too. We just, maybe we just need a better wording. We just, maybe we just need a better wording for a goal.
We're coming, we're coming back to that.
And I'm going to put it here, this is very broad, but it's social determinants of health.
Social determinants of health.
So improve our social determinants of health, and that, I think under, under that category, we would have a hospital, library, access to food.
It's going too fast.
Sorry.
We're, we're talking about.
Yeah, those will be the.
Improve social, uh.
Social determinants.
Determinants. Do you think you said of health?
Of health.
Of health, okay. Now, you're not done, just let her catch up.
Sorry, I couldn't, just couldn't use the acronym.
It's okay, it's okay. All right. You had more?
I'm going to leave this one for Councilmember Robinson, I'm sure she'll have that one. Improve the pro, internal processes to the city.
Improve internal processes in the city.
Okay, perfect, yes.
Well, wait a minute, I, does that capture what you just said? Okay.
Now, I explain in mine, and it might fit under a subcategory, but.
Okay, but let's be clear.
For a business permit. Making it easy for someone to follow the business permit from conception to keys to open the door.
Could we just put under that, and we'll come back and talk about how we fleshed that out, processes, internal processes? Because I think that says more.
Like, it's internal, but it's external.
Yeah.
Right, it's, the people do business with City of Richmond.
Right, okay, okay.
Think the, I think those are, the rest of them are going to be subcategories.
Okay, and we can come back.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bana.
Thank you, I think we're doing well. I'm happy with the process. I think in the next step, we should open a bracket in front of each one and just list what goes in there. For example, first one, I think it, it's meant to be increasing access and quality of housing. Correct that, please?
Yeah.
And I think homeownership should be considered there, in addition to affordable housing, addressing homelessness issue, we need to pave the road for first-time buyers in the city.
Okay, are we capturing her comments?
And should change into and.
Are we, are we discussing goals right now?
Well, people, laying out their goals, yes. They're, they're telling us what their goals are. I think what we're trying to do is where we see commonality, is to put those together, but I want to make sure that we're capturing what your intent is, so when we come back and discuss it, that we have the whole picture.
And one of the very important things in the city for the youth is access to playgrounds, sports facilities, and parks. I'm not sure if it goes under quality of life issues or.
But I want to make sure.
Infrastructure capital needs.
I don't want her thought to be lost though, so maybe we need to start this, have a separate page or something, because what you just said is not clearly stated there.
Yeah, increase access to parks, playgrounds, and sports facilities.
Just go ahead and record it, and we can figure out later how it matches.
Thank you.
What's already been said. But I don't want to miss your substance. You want to go back to the, I'm sorry? A part of social determinants of health, okay.
Because that's part of, right, just making sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to make clear that, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Willis.
I'm sure these are going to go into subcategories, but I'm just going to read them as I listed them. Increasing our service delivery. Chance.
What do you mean by that?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Let's go ahead and record it.
Yeah, yeah, it could be plus one, it's own thing.
Let's just record what people say.
It's already up there. Housing relocation, so similar to others, I'm thinking for relocation for homeless individuals or those who are evicted. Increasing recreation services, there's been a lot of talk about getting a skate ring, so that's a, for example. Yeah, I'm down, let's do it. Just don't get me on skates. The library.
What about the library?
I wanted renovated.
Renovation of the library?
Renovation of the library, yes.
Now, before we get into this.
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
That was, that was four.
Oh, okay, I beg your pardon.
And job training for juniors and seniors in high school who are not college-ready. Those are my five goals.
Okay, and did we get that?
I mean, thank you.
You might have.
Did you? Yeah, I will.
Okay. But I want to get it on the list.
Oh, they're, they're writing it down.
Okay.
Training for.
I want to make sure that to the extent that we can, that we capture what you're saying. And I need to tell three of you, I have all of the notes that you sent to me, all of them, four pages, two pages, four, I have all of them, in addition to our interviews, and none of them have been ignored. When you're ready, four or five minutes, if you choose to do that, we can run through those so that you know you were heard, okay? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, accountability.
Accountability, okay. And accountability from whom?
Accountability from everyone.
Okay? Okay, accountability dash everybody. Good, thank you.
Also, revitalize, revitalizing the port.
Revitalizing the port. That's on several of your goals that you gave me.
And revitalizing what?
The port.
The port.
Okay.
Right, which will include a lot of other things.
That's on several of those, yeah. But you, okay. You got more.
Also, let's see, a plus on homelessness, a plus on increasing city revenues, a plus on increasing public access to city facilities.
Okay, increasing public access to city facilities. And we can come and talk more about what that means. The mayor still has the mic.
And then, um, making information more accessible to the public. So I guess that would be part of the city service delivery.
Well, but that's more specific, and I want to capture it. Making cities' services more accessible to the public? Is that what you said?
Yeah, services, information.
All right, services and information, okay. There will be, when you decide what, and remember, I was the one who suggested the five goals. You can decide you want three, you can decide you want 20, but I, you're, you're bound by my suggestion. You've heard why I suggested that, but you're bound by that. It's simply a suggestion. Mr. Mayor?
And we all think differently, and, and it's really hard to capture what priorities are without, you know, giving you a long list, but the library is also very important to me, which, which also fits under providing the services, so.
Just for two minutes, and time me, Madam Kirk. Just so you hear what I heard, and I'm hearing a lot of it right now. Funding for new library, renovation of the main library, increase hours of operation for parks and recreation, create grants manager, which you didn't put that in there, fill staff vacancies, expand vocational training, improve parking accessibility in neighborhoods, implement a rent inspection program, tenant, that's twice, increase sidewalk repairs, maintain and improve parks, illegal dumping, improve public safety, road repair safety, improve maintenance repairs for landscaping and public property, increase housing supply, increase affordable housing, reduce homelessness, revitalize business, increase city revenue, develop strategic plan for the port, create pass to homeownership, expand tenant eviction service assistance. That's what I heard. Okay, and you have added to that, and that's the process. And now here's where we are. So how do you want to proceed?
If, if I could?
Yes.
I just want to say that I noticed that in, I think you, I don't know whether you have it up on there or not, but in the packet, you have fill staff vacancies, which I suspect we all want.
That's up there.
It is up there. But we didn't talk about it too much when we went one by one. Is that kind of like an overarching thing in order to get all this other stuff done?
Well, when you, you may throw me out of here, and I've been thrown out of better places than this. You may decide that what you're going to hear is, in order to make real progress on some of these goals, you're going to need people to do the work. Incidentally, you haven't paid me a dime. I've been working for you for almost two years, I have not gotten one penny from the City of Oakland.
You need to invoice.
Where's the finance director?
That falls under internal structure.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. You can't get paid if you don't submit an invoice.
Okay, so.
That's what finance director would say. Councilmember Jimenez.
I, I just say that you need to invoice. So you get paid.
Can you get what?
You need to invoice.
Okay, all right, now, yes, if you call me Mr. Gardner again, but I've been calling you Vice Mayor McLaughlin, so Mr. Gardner, that's okay, but I generally don't accept it.
All right, Henry, so you said it's up there, right? More staff is one of the things.
Well, that's one of the ones that several of you mentioned when I talked to you.
Yeah, but it wasn't one of them that we did when we went. I understand, so just make sure it's on the list.
When you talk about the goals, I'm going to remind you that.
Okay.
People have to do some of this stuff.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am. You're on, you're good.
All right, so here's the point in the process where I feel like we could do two things. We could work on bringing like things together and rewording it so it expresses the intent more effectively, or we could talk about what we believe falls under each one of those things, because I didn't go into details under what I think falls under each of these things. And as, just as an example, to say that in my, my little world, strengthening cities' infra, internal infrastructure, filling vacancies, because that strengthens infrastructure, so included a workforce analysis, so we could understand where we didn't need, you know, we might need less. So, you know, we have two paths forward, because there, there is, some of these things are very similar, and we could just come up with better language so that it, it holds both or all.
Yes, yes, yes.
I don't know if you can hear me. I can't hear myself. I like that, I like the second suggestion there. I think if we have these big buckets, and then we can then drill into each one of them, because I, I'm, I'm thinking at the end, there not only are we coming up with goals and objectives, but then we have to give guidance on the budget, so where are we going to put the money? So Daniel can get all of these things done by the end of the year, right, Daniel? So then we're going to have to put money behind it, and I think if we then break down each piece, we can say, okay, we put a dollar here, $2 there, we'll come back to this one in the second year. I'm assuming that's going to be the process, but I like that we have these bigger categories and then smaller, we start, we start drilling down into.
This process is very compressed, and it's not a criticism, and it's nobody's fault. Everybody's been working hard. But the reason I have been pushing to have this discussion is to inform your budget decisions, to your point. Yes, ma'am?
I think, have you been waiting?
So, kind of adding on to what Caesar said, I think that, yes, we're on our way to figuring out how to prioritize allocation of funds, but on the way there, we also need to consider each one of the objectives that gets us towards a goal, and what time to put it in, because some of the objectives are very long-term, short-term things, so some things would be indicated in this budget, and some things are. So I think that that's another meeting, and what we want to do with a little bit of time that we have now is just clarify our goals, drop objectives under those goals, and then have another meeting that talks about timeline.
Strategies and all that.
And funding and, and things like that.
Okay.
Would we be able to break down, and not to give you guys more work, but maybe each one of these in its own page, so then we can put things sub under it?
Yes, we can do that, and again, we may need, I'm sorry, what is it? Yes. Yeah, we're, yeah, I think, I think the suggestion was, can we put each of these, is that the suggestion I heard? On a page by itself, and maybe we can use some of the wall space, so you can see all of this at the same time, should go through it? Yeah, yeah, we can cover over, I, I ran through those, and, and I gave you, you have all of those in your notes. Yes, Councilmember Jimenez? Did you, were you speaking?
So, I think this is where the facilitation magic happened, right, right now? Where we had been naming different goals, and some of them are more or less the same or can be reframed, so I think like, maybe what we need right now is all of these goals, and see what are those who really can be better named, that can be the goal. For instance, I am just talking about the housing relocation, I see access and quality of houses and homeless, that can be a better one. I am seeing improved quality of life plus community health with improved social determin, determinants of health, recreation, access to parks, playground, and open space. So I think like, right now, what is needed is your support as a great facilitator to really help us to look into this and see how we are going to rename or group it, right? Thank you.
Lock the door, please.
It was that in the RFP.
Here, here's what, here's what I, here's what I think, I'm here. Rather than having a single page for each of these, should we try to start on one page, putting some of these together, like the housing stuff? Does, does that make sense? So we have housing as a main one, and then we put homelessness under it, and we put, what else, increasing access for quality of housing, we put under it. Do you want to do, try it that way? And then for some of the others? Making city services more accessible, putting accountability under that, and trying it that way, or do you want to put a separate sheet up for each one of these and discuss it?
May I? I believe the first five may include everything else, so let's start with the first five, make sure we're on the same page on what each item includes, if needed, we can move forward. But I think the first page should include second and third page, but we just want to make sure that we agree on the details on subcategories.
So is, is kind of like frame it better, more than just put in one-on-one? It just have a, a nice way of saying it that include every.
I, I think we should dispel out subcategories.
Yeah, for, for instance.
I just. I just was going to say, I, I think Councilmember Bana said she thinks the first five there cover everything, and I think it does cover a lot. It doesn't cover shoreline issues unless you can think of where it would fit in. I think it's really important because of climate change, sea level rise, toxicities that we have, so maybe we have six goals, unless it fits into another one.
Public safety.
Could I move this over here? You're, you're talking now about the first five, and I think the. That's increasing access, which includes quality of housing, includes homelessness, increase revenues, economic development and jobs, improve quality of life, community health, improve public safety, strengthen the city's internal infrastructure processes. Are those the first five you're talking about?
I think that's what Councilmember Bana was saying, but I think that the shoreline.
You can add, okay, all right.
Fits, should fit in.
Okay, all right, that will, and we have discussion around that, but let's see if we have agreement on trying to capture the first five and seeing what didn't make that list.
Henry, would we, would we be able to move the post-it?
We're going to.
Over, no, no, the big board here, because I can't see the third.
Sure, okay. Could we take the, move the board?
Oh, that, or move that one over, thank you.
Yeah, I want this one on the board, closer to the council. Maybe you can bring it in the center here.
Can I make a, can I make another suggestion? So I would like to go, to have us go through the ones that are not the first five, and can we, anything that fit into the first five?
That's a good, that's a good process.
Can we add it to the list of five so that we have more than five, so we would consider, do we want to have more than five goals?
You're close again, aren't you?
Well, and, and I think we should probably have a separate sheet for the first five so that we can write down the ones that do fit.
Yeah, and then we see what's left out.
Right.
I just, I just think that maybe we could just do it in steps. So first, let's make sure that we include anything that's not already included in the first five, and then we get a list of six or seven or whatever it is.
So we can.
And then next, we go and include things in the, in that list of six or seven.
But, but as we're looking at them and deciding whether it's included or not, we can see where it's included, and we can just write it down.
Okay, I get what you're saying. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Can, can we do this? So we move this process. Can you put the, this one on this board, so they can see? These are not in the first five, which is whatever. These are not in the first five, which is whatever. And so we'll put this, this list over here, and let's move it closer to the council so they can see it. I'll read from it so the audience will hear what it is that we're doing and talking about. None of these people is old as I am, but they can't see from that far back. Bring it more closer.
And to keep from reading everything, we should just number them, one, two, three, four, five, and then if something fits, we can write the number that it fits into next to it.
You have those dots? Just bring me those dots, too. Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, so.
The mic goes in and out. Sorry about that. But I'm not your engineer either.
Hello.
Hello. Oh, you got the facilitator.
I've got the power.
Yeah, you got the power. Okay, looking at these ones, where they can be here, I think like, improved quality of life and community, and community health, maybe is increased public access to city facilities. I'm just, just trying to, like, because I feel like many of these things here can be part of that as subjective or as objective. For instance, the renovation of the library is not as a goal of itself, it's an strategy to maybe in the improved quality of life and community health, right? Job training for juniors and seniors who are not college-ready can be in the economic development and jobs, right? Revitalizing the port in the economic development.
Yeah, so instead of each of us going through the list, we should, we should hit renovation of the library and then decide as a group.
Yep.
Where it fits.
Okay, so I said that renovation of the library can be an improved quality of life and community health.
I think it also goes under economic development because we need to change, improve the face of the city, and it gives the area a facelift, which is much needed.
And this is, this is the issue, because I see it as number five, strengthening the city's internal infrastructure.
Okay, and so job training, I heard that we tried to collapse that with economic development? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Can I offer something for Eduardo?
Hold on, Councilmember Robinson. Let me hear what others have to say. We'll come back.
Your question is about jobs. Do you want us just to raise hands if we agree?
That it, that it's a priority.
So I thought, I think we should work through one at a time. And I would like to offer just something for Eduardo on number one, on renovation of the library. So when I think of, when I think of strengthening the city's internal infrastructure, I think I'm speaking specifically not of physical built environment.
Capital.
I'm speaking of services, staffing, staffing levels.
Understood.
You know, communication between staff and council, things like that. Like that kind of, that kind of stuff, not, not public infrastructure, not physical buildings.
All right. And where, accountability? Everybody's held accountable? Do we have?
We still need to do this job training, right? So the job training is going to be under, we said it's going to be under economic development?
Yeah.
That's under economic. Accountability.
They're strengthening the city's internal infrastructure.
Okay, so you're saying then, what is that? Is that five?
Five.
Okay. Revitalizing the port? Is that economic development or?
Economic development.
Economic development. Increasing public access to city's facilities?
Three.
I think that's up there, isn't it?
Three.
Number three? Okay. And making city's services more accessible.
Five.
Is that five?
Five.
Okay, all right. We're making progress. Is everybody okay?
Good.
Because I know where the exit sign is.
Coffee.
I'm sorry?
More coffee. Coffee.
Coffee?
No, no, no more coffee.
Do you need more coffee?
No, you got to keep working.
I do want to, I just, I do want to state that I feel like it's important that we can wordsmith this later and make the goals like sing and make us happy and give us joy and all that kind of stuff. But right now, disgrouping.
If you have to have coffee, you may have coffee. But you need to get that coffee and come right back. Infrastructure capital needs.
Number two?
Number two?
So are we going by raising hands or what?
Yeah, just tell.
Okay, so I think infrastructure capital needs, I don't, I mean, if we're talking about, I think library would fit into that. I think other buildings like MLK and BTA would all fit into that. So I don't know if that fits into, what is the number two?
Number two says increased revenues. And that has economic development and jobs as part of it.
Can I offer something?
Yeah, please.
So I, in my, in my brain, the reason why I liked the category of quality of life and community health is because why do you create a community center? Why do you create a library? It's to increase quality of life. That's the goal, right? Like, these are the methods, these, that's what you would do to improve the quality of life for residents, right? So that, for me, those kinds of capital improvements, the ultimate goal is.
In your mind, can I just ask, since we're, can, in your mind, does that also include like street improvements?
Can I, can I add something to that?
I think like also.
So I'm going to ask, answer your question really quick. I said yes.
Okay.
Including parking, because all these things bring a lot of stress to residents, right? The issues they're having with parking, the fact the roads and the sidewalks are messed up, you know, that the parks aren't well-maintained. That's all quality of life things, right?
Yeah, I agree with both of you. And I would like to also say that maybe it could be some of these on improved public safety because street calming is something around improving the safety of the community. So maybe infrastructure capital needs is, is at two things where some infrastructure is improving quality of health, and some of them, like a street calming that we are talking about, the A-Team projects that we just approved is in public safety as well.
Thank you. I, I'm fine with what was just stated, and I think that the, the library and all the other buildings that I'm concerned about fits into that.
Okay. Other comments? Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that I'm just noticing from this discussion is that we actually have a mix of issues on here. We have some of the more specific issues like renovating the library, but then service delivery or access to housing, those are more broad categories that is going to require its own deep dive, like at subsequent meetings, or maybe even here on like, okay, what does access to housing look like? Is it housing relocation? Is it pathways to homeownership? What's going to be the cost, the staff and necessities? So I'm just making that observation because I feel like this is going to be an ongoing conversation, and we do have specific priorities up here. But a lot of these are very broad categories, and a lot of things are going to come up. And then it's going to be, what I'm predicting is going to happen from my own personal point of view, is we're going to get a subset of issues, like if we're going to increase social services or capital needs, here are the things we could look at. Booker T., Martin Luther King, soccer fields, recreation centers. We're going to have to decide which one of those takes priority as staff comes back and say, here's those things. So I'm just saying all that to say is like, it's okay if we don't have all the answers right now, because this is something that we're going to have to peel back the layers to as time goes on, because the needs are so vast in our city.
Mr. Mayor, and then Councilmember Jimenez.
I think.
And then Councilmember Robbins.
Sorry, I had my hand.
Well, I beg your pardon.
It took after.
Mr. Mayor, and then Councilmember Bana. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I, I think we have to guard ourselves against confusing strategies and priorities with goals.
How do you propose we do that?
Well, well, by, number one, by, by listing everything into, into the goal, you know, because we're categoric, we're, we're actually doing it now by, by putting these things into the specific five goals that we have up there. So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is that we will have more discussion when we go to the next step.
You're going to have to. Councilmember Jimenez and then Councilmember Robbins.
Yeah, I think like, what we are going, what we are trying to do here is to frame the goals, and then after that, objectives. And then the objectives are more specific, right? And yeah, I agree with Councilmember Melvins that we will have to prioritize in these objectives. What is, if we want increased access of quality housing, reduce homeless, what are the things, the objectives that are going to be first in the list, and what's second, what's third? But these are no issues. We are, we are talking here about goals and objectives that are measurable, that are, that can have timeline and budget. So I think like, we need to use like, goals, bigger picture, objectives, how to get to that goals, and that, like, that, so we don't get confused about it.
Councilmember Robinson? Oh, no. Councilmember Bana was there. Bana. Looking too much to the left. Is that, is that where you are? I need to mix these chairs up. I apologize.
Thank you. So I, I hope the discussion continues on another day, and we set priorities and everything. But I just wanted to comment on the next one. Sure, and I agree that some of the items belong in one, more than one category, but shoreline issues that Councilmember McLaughlin rightfully suggests, I think they add constraints to housing and economic development. And we should open up each category and see what the issues under the, under those topics are.
So, so I would. My comment I was going to make and after Councilmember Bana, and I think it ties right in with what she's saying. I do think it's, I wanted to expand upon that shoreline issues as a goal and say shoreline issues and ecological sustainability. It's more, it's, you know, it, yes, it's an issue of community health, it's an issue of city health, but it's also an issue of the planet. And we need to, and it's not only, you know, I, I think ecologic, we've often talked about that throughout our years in terms of the importance of ecological sustainability. I think it needs to be a separate item.
I'm sorry, do you think we should have like a budget item for it, or it's a constraint on the things that we do?
It's, it's not just a constraint. We might need to do things, and I don't know in terms of budgetary, but we need to do things to create like a living shoreline, to make it truly ecologically sound. Sometimes it might require some budgetary input. Okay.
Councilmember Zapata, and then Councilmember Willis.
I was going to, you.
I've gone back to the right now. I've tried to balance things.
You call me next. So I wanted the support that I actually agree that this is a sixth goal, and that there's a whole group of things that include like the Climate Action Plan and kind of moving on all of the things in that, that would fit under that sixth goal, and I think it's good to pull it out.
Was it Councilmember Zapata?
And I agree. We already are, the West County Wastewater District, along with the City of Richmond, we've been working on the shoreline levy. So I think that kind of fits in there. And there's money that's needed, so we might want to put some funding into it to continue it. So there might be, that might be in. But I wanted to see if we can add another, maybe another goal, or maybe give me some clarification of where this might fit. But very broadly, the future of Richmond. Where do we see it? I'm going to be talking a lot about electrification, right? If we're bringing in electric vehicle charging stations, if we're moving in towards that, where do we see Richmond? Fixing our infrastructure, that's today, that's now, that's yesterday's issues that we're preparing today. But where are we going to tomorrow? And I don't know how that fits in super broad, but.
We've captured it separately when we come back, we'll go through this list. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we're having difficulties jumping around from goals and objectives. I want to read what I found on the internet. It says a goal is an achievable outcome that typically broad in long term. And, here, actually, there's a better one. And it says, so goals can be intangible and nonmeasurable, but objectives are defined in terms of tangible targets.
I'm sorry, defined in terms of what?
In terms of tangible targets, you know, so, 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 so an objective would have a performance, you know, a certain amount of things happening within a certain amount of time. Those are objectives. A goal is more general. And, and, and so I, I think what we are trying to do is to find goals, and then within that goal, find subdivisions underneath that goal so that we can decide, you know, how we want to move.
That, that was and is the intent. Council, were you, have you had it?
Yeah.
Councilmember Willis and then Councilmember Robbins.
Yeah, I'm just thinking back to what the mayor said earlier, that we all process things a different way. And yeah, what, I would just wanted to concur with Vice Mayor McLaughlin that the shoreline is also an important goal, probably should be number six. But I also think that's something that could be a bit married to the revitalizing the port too, because that is an important piece of our shoreline. So I feel like that could also be expanded to the rest of the shoreline. But that's just me personally. I don't know if that's actually helpful, but I feel like if we're talking about the port, the shoreline's going to be talked about either way.
Councilmember Robinson and then Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Yes, it's back. Okay. In an ecosystem where things cross, right? Nothing lives in a vacuum, nothing lives in a silo. And so these things, the port's going to cross with ecological, you know, that's going to cross with economic issues, that's going to cross with quality of life issues. What we need to do is figure out where it most lives, not where, not necessarily where the intersections are. Like, that's fine, intersections are fine. I feel like if we can just be a little disciplined right now and make it through this list, because we, there's a lot more work to do. On, it's just on here, on, on really wordsmithing these goals. So, because right now, they're not great goals. Like, I actually believe that goals do need to be a little bit more tight and have measurable outcomes and, and be defined, so you know when you achieve the goal. If it's too broad, you have no idea if you've achieved a goal or not. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that. I, I think especially in a short-term, one-year, two-year, four-year, five-year thing, you need to put some things on it. So what I would love us to do, if we can, is just, we have one, two, three, four, five things. We could just get through those five things and then circle back to the goals and do a little bit of wordsmithing. Because when I'm looking at this, and I'm seeing the social determinants of health, I'm like, eh, maybe that's a better way of talking about improving quality of life and community health. I don't know. Let's have that conversation.
All right, let's see, Council, Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
I just, I agree, we need to get on to the others. I do want to just say that the, I've thought a lot about this issue of the shoreline and the port, because I do think the port is more economic development, whereas the shoreline issues are more on preserving the ecology, because it's not built out, as some of it is, but it's not built out. So I think it kind of is separate, and that's.
All right, we've heard the discussion about shoreline, and it sounds like there is consensus that at least put it on the list of goals to be further discussed and refined. Moving on, improve social determinants of health.
Three.
Yeah, under three. Next one probably goes under three as well.
There's agreement. Access to parks, playground, three also, and open space.
What do you mean by service?
Service delivery, I think that, I'm sorry, comment five for which? For which?
It's strengthening.
Okay, all right. Vote for five? Okay, housing relocation?
One.
It's one. Recreation?
Three.
You're moving.
And then we got one more, one more.
Yes, there's room for one more?
No, that is one more, the future of Richmond.
I think, may I have a suggestion for that one more?
One, two, three, four, five.
My suggestion for one more is, when we go through each of those six categories, look at the future direction and then come up with objectives.
That is a process suggestion.
I would like to add that, you know, in, in a healthy city with healthy infrastructures, we'd have a strategic planning process, right? And a long-term strategic plan is that future of Richmond. So in, in my brain, like strengthening the city's internal infrastructure and processes includes strategic planning as a regular activity that happens, you know, short-term and long-term planning. term and long-term planning, and it would be there.
Let's see. So the other that we put up here for discussion is the future of Richmond, and councilmember Robinson has just commented, other comments about where that goes?
Five.
It's broad, it's big.
I'm sorry, I just.
Councilmember Vena.
I just suggested that we add it to each one of those five, six categories.
The future of Richmond?
Yeah, the future direction for each discussion.
Okay.
So we, we look at the long-term goal and then short-term objectives.
All right, so what is the consensus of where we put the future of Richmond? I'm hearing, right now, you aren't ready to make it a standalone goal. Are you, do you see a place over there for it? And so that it doesn't get lost?
I do have my guess. Can I offer, and if everyone is on board, that when we, if we were able to actually list objectives under strengthening internal infrastructure and processes, that strategic planning would be under that as, as a goal of having a strategic plan for the city and that, that, because, you know, the future is always happening, right? It's never, it never ends. And so we actually need to have it on a schedule where we're always entering into a process of strategic planning, so, because the future is always happening. So establishing a regular schedule of strategic planning as a good, healthy city process, and it strengthens our city by having it, it should live under there, right? Like, considering the future of Richmond. We should always be continually considering the future of Richmond, because it's always moving.
And so the suggestion is to put this subject along with strategic planning?
Under number five.
Is there a consensus around that?
I'm sorry, I, I need to be clear on this. Are we, as councilmembers, gonna have a brief discussion about the future in each direction of those six categories, or we wanna have a?
What I would, what I would. Start doing right now.
The stupid microphone. What I would like to propose is that strategic planning should be a process that the council, that the city, the directors, that everyone is involved with on a regular basis, right? So we set up, you know, in any healthy organization where you're, you wanna be looking forward on a regular basis, whether it be every five years or every 10 years or whatever, and you wanna have a plan that is considering where you wanna move your organization into the future. And I feel like that's where we, we, we look at strategic planning under all of these different goals and objectives, right? You actually take time out to say, okay, where are we going economically? Where are we going in terms of transportation? Where are we going in terms of all of these different categories? But it's a process that's unified and under, you know, a strategic planning process. And what we don't have right now is, is a, a practice within our staff, within our city government, of doing it at a regular interval, right? And that is the process that I feel like we should put in place and support, you know, city staff on doing and, and make sure it's inclusive of council. And I feel like that's why it lives under strengthening city internal services.
I agree, but may I say something quickly?
Yes, councilmember Bana.
Usually the way it works, the staff prepares something, brings to us. We never have this golden opportunity where all of us sit together and discuss it. So I think that's important, maybe not today, but maybe we can have Mr. Gardner with us in the future to do that. I think it's very important.
I'm gonna make one comment about that, and I think that that's one of the things that actually could strengthen our city, that if we, if we codify inclusion of council as well as directors and staff in decision-making, as, that's just the way we do business. And that would, to me, strengthen the city's infrastructure as well.
And then councilmember, Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Yeah, I agree with.
And I need to move you. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I agree with councilmember Robinson that looking at the future of Richmond is looking at the process of how we do strategic planning. Today, we are looking at the future of Richmond by creating all these goals. So it's implicit already there, because we are saying like how we are going to look into the goal of increasing access and quality of housing. So that is, I, I feel like is, in some part is redundant, and I think like the process is the thing that we need to put there, so we are advancing that process of strategic planning with inclusion better system.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin, where, what is the suggestion where the future of Richmond lies on that sheet, or is it a separate goal?
So I think it's more like a mission statement. What is the future, what, you know, and it couldn't pull from, you know, when we get these goals worked out, maybe, you know, mission statement, the future of Richmond needs to be a sustainable, healthy, quality of life city, whatever, you know? So I would rather it be kind of the overarching thing.
And that way it will never be lost, because it'll be on the front page of your agenda every time you meet. Yes.
I, I agree with that, and I agree with everyone too. I think great comments where it fits, I just wanna make sure that we are always constantly thinking of that and not just looking at, you know, fixing yesteryear's issues to make it be okay to today. I wanna make sure that we don't just fix it, but maybe we come up with a whole new something. Looking at transportation, for example, that we don't just say, you know, we haven't purchased, and I'm just making this up, right, we haven't purchased red cars in a while, so let's purchase a bunch of red cars. No, now let's purchase the next future vehicles. Let's do the next future thing, taking a time to look at everything that we need to do to get us there.
I want to tell you that in one hour and 20 minutes, you have been enormously efficient. And part of that is because I pushed you, but part of it is because you've been absolutely focused and reasonably succinct. When we started this discussion, the mayor and I had an exchange about the definition of goals and objectives, and I hope we do not get lost in that. But I want to circle back to that, because I think it's important. The 49ers' goal is to win the Super Bowl. That's his goal. His objectives, he's got to beat a whole lot of teams before he gets there. His strategy is that the coach has to put together a top-rate team with training and motivation and inspiration and all of that. But the goal of the 49ers is to win the Super Bowl. Okay, we have had robust and rich discussion. You're already well into where you're not supposed to be until 12:30. And I want to commend you for that, and I want to leave you with this, and I take no credit for it. One of the issues that I heard from virtually everybody is time management. You have to start on time, you have to be succinct, and you have to end on time. So it is only 11:20, and we are already, we aren't taking a break yet. Alyssa, do you want to take a break now?
Yes, I, I have a suggestion. Let's expand each one of them, because under, for example, increasing access and quality of housing, I mentioned paving the road to homeownership, it's not there yet. So let's open up each one of them, make sure our understanding of what each category entitles, is this, we are all on the same page, and then take a break. Thank you.
Good suggestion. Councilmember Robinson and then Mr. Mayor.
I would actually, I would actually think that, I love what you just said, I think exactly what we should do, but I do think that we might need a little bit of a brain break to release some tension. And in the meantime, while we take a break, maybe staff could help us out by creating different pieces of paper with each one of the six now, six goals. And then when we come back, we can start by dropping and making sure we're dropping each one of the subtitle, sub items underneath each one.
Is there consensus around that? Sounds like a good process suggestion to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and the break is 10 minutes. Return all those voicemail messages, text messages, and get another cup of coffee. And in exactly 10 minutes, if there's only one person, we're gonna start. I'm just joking.
I agree. I agree. Do me a favor.
Now, we said we're gonna start on time, we're gonna end on time, we're gonna do that. Now, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor McLaughlin, and honorable members of this august body, what I last heard you say, and you need to correct me if I have misstated it, that you want now to go through your goals? Is that what you said? And you want to do what? What else did you say? I want to make sure I don't misstate it.
Doesn't like me. Hello, no. Okay, so I think where we're at, and this is what we said before, was now we're gonna, after we give our brains a little break, we're gonna go back and we're actually gonna drop in all of the numbered items, not the big goals, because we have those on separate papers now, but the ones that are numbered items that are not, not stated in the big goal, we're gonna drop them under the goal where they live. And then we're gonna make sure that the other things that people were thinking about that may also fall under, under those, these big goals are stated and clearly visible, right? Because not everything is visible yet. So for instance, right now, we would take renovation of the library, and we would literally put it on number three. Well, we already did that, we just need to actually literally put them. So we would, we would literally, yeah, let's, so we would literally take renovation of the library and just make sure it's under number three. Yeah. Yeah, that one's good. So we would, we take this list, and actually, since we've already agreed on this whole list, there was just a great suggestion from staff, that we don't need to talk about this right this second, just have, have the staff go ahead and put it where it belongs over here, and what we could talk about is these, and see if anything that we haven't addressed in those are over here, we can put them under the right ones.
Is everybody clear about what we're doing?
Uh huh.
Madam Robinson, I need the microphone.
Sorry.
Okay, are we clear about what councilmember Robinson just said? It was, I think, consensus? Yes? Councilmember Jimenez, do you have a comment?
I think it's like the receivers.
Oh, they don't have mics. Well, we'll ask the engineers to work on that.
Mine works. You want this one?
Yes.
I think it's a receiver that you put in and out.
Oh, yes. Oh, we have our engineer who's going to give us some instructions on how to make these things work.
See that's muted? Muted. Check.
Can I, can I have my?
All right, in the meantime, I'll pass them around. So the staff is gonna start putting those under here? Do we have a second subscriber, transcriber, scribe, scribe? I'll get it right.
And what we can do is we can pull these from below to make sure we're not leaving anything behind, right?
Yes, yeah, but we'll have to wait for a second for them to do that to be in front of them. And then the suggestion is, once we've done that, we're gonna take a quick sweep of the ones that are on the bottom to make sure that nothing got dropped off. Is everybody okay with what we're doing?
Should we start now?
You okay?
We should start now.
Yeah.
I, I just have, whoever put, put those headlines on, I think it makes more sense to say, I can't see, what is the first one there? It's the shoreline issues thing. What does it say? Addressing shoreline issues and ecological sustainability. That's a little bit more clear, I think.
All right.
Can we add on environmental issues?
I heard you want to, but we have a, we have a visual problem now, because they're trying to transcribe, so if you, for you to get, it don't take us a few minutes.
I, I think it's fine. Here, here's, here's what I would, I propose that we do, is that we can, yeah, exactly, grab, you got it, Caesar. Mine melted, mine.
Will you put those on here?
Thank you.
So we wanna make sure we're not leaving anything behind, right?
We'll just flip them, yeah, okay. I want to know, are the councilmembers being paid?
Not much.
They've been working really hard this morning.
We are given a stipend.
I'm, I'm going to talk to the voters. Okay, so we're putting these up here, you're gonna be reviewing these to make sure that nothing gets left off as they transcribe, as they transcribe.
I think all of them in front of us go on the number one, unless anyone thinks otherwise.
Increase, suggestion has been made that increase housing, affordable housing, homelessness, pathways to ownership. Expand tenant eviction services. The suggestion is, put, all those go under which?
Under number one.
Under one. Good. Give them another raise. Okay. Let's bring the next, next list. I'll read, I'll read these to you. Revitalize business. Where are we going over here?
Two.
Two, revitalize business, increase city revenue?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Strategic plan?
Two.
That's specifically for the port, but it's still good. Funding for new library?
Three.
Oops. Recreation of the main library?
Three, renovation.
And renovation, what did I say?
Three.
And then increase hours of operation for parks and recreation.
Three.
Okay.
So all of these are three?
Yeah.
There's two and then all three.
Caesar, you need to make sure while you're doing all this work that you're participating in this discussion.
Can you make sure that they are three?
Caesar, I want to make sure while you're doing all this helping that you're paying attention to what we're doing with these items.
Yes. Caesar, can you join us, please?
Caesar, we'll get somebody else to do that. I want to make sure we're hearing your voice in what we're doing here. I appreciate the help. Improve public safety. You know where we are?
Number four.
Four. Road repairs for safety?
Four.
Four. Improved maintenance, repairs and landscaping of public property?
Four, four, three.
I hear three and four. Quick slash three, four. Then we'll come back.
And the road repairs could be three.
It's a three? Is there agreement? Oh, it's a three.
I cannot see.
Oh, I'm sorry, I beg your, yeah.
Road repairs would be three also.
Well, it says improved maintenance, repairs and landscaping on public property. Number three is where we are?
I would say, I would say that even though road repairs are, are increases safety, I would, I would say that it's also three. It just has the dual outcome of also increasing safety.
Okay, we'll come back, we'll discuss it when we get to the list. Okay. Improve parking accessibility in neighborhoods?
Three.
Three is agreement. Implementation of rental inspection program?
One.
Tenant protection and rental assistance?
One.
One.
Increase sidewalk repairs?
Three.
No, that goes number four.
I hear two answers.
Number four?
Let's see what's in, I hear three and four.
That's public safety issue.
I think that's very similar to the other one that we just put over there.
I'm hearing three slash four, is there consensus?
I think, I think it is what we are saying is that some of these, some of these thing around streets, calming, street repairs are, have double, like, is improving quality of life for people, but also add another, achieve another goal of public safety. So it could be three slash four if we want to.
I think it's, we're doing it mostly because it's number four, and also it's liability issue. We can ask director of public works what he thinks.
Three and four.
Three, four.
I would say three and four to be inclusive.
Let's just, let's do three slash four, and then we, then we, that's fine.
I agree.
Maintain and improve parks?
Three.
Three.
Three, consensus is there? Illegal dumping?
Three.
Three.
Also under economic development, I guess, the face of the city is important. It's two and.
Wait a minute, what item are you on?
Three.
Illegal dumping. So I think again, it's like some of the things that we do will have, you know, in fact, I think they're, they're really the best things to do.
Okay, let's go three.
If they have multiple benefits.
Three.
A three.
So I have a question. In terms of the infrastructure capital?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something that's, that we're gonna get to later, or did that not get, did that somehow get folded?
All of the infrastructure capital is under right now, based on quality of life, I think that's all in our city.
So I thought we talked about that maybe being separate?
No.
Infrastructure capital projects? So you're saying that's all under quality of life?
This is two things. We can make the decision of adding another, another goal, we have seven goals, or we can collapse it under quality of life.
I was, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I really don't care how it gets, you know, just so it's captured. And also, I would just say that improved parks are capital projects as well, so if it's under, capital projects are under three, then parks under three makes sense as well.
Okay, we're good with that? I do want to caution that in our attempt to squeeze this into five goals, that we do not lose the significance of some of these issues that are falling underneath them. that are falling underneath them. But that's your call and we can come back and discuss that.
Can I, can I add one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is something that we might want to consider, is that we are going to need to prioritize these subcategories, these objectives, right? And we're not going to be able to do everything at once. So we're going to have like our top, our top whatever, they are five or three or whatever. And so when we consider that, it might be beneficial if we really want to hit capital projects to have it be its own category because then if we would categorize those, prioritize those sub, subprojects and they would have, they wouldn't be competing with other quality of life things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But we want to be careful about not having too many goals.
Right. And too many underneath them. Create grants manager position with staff support?
Five.
Fill staff vacancies?
Five.
Expand vocational training programs.
Two.
All right. I'll do a time check. It's quarter to 12. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I would like to add infill.
Infill?
Yeah.
Infill development, you mean?
Okay.
Under housing?
Oh, we'll just add it over there. If there, if there's consensus. Mr. Mayor, I need you to use your microphone. We want everybody to hear what you have to say. Yeah, there you go. Go ahead.
It works, huh? Okay.
Yes.
I was suggesting infill for economic development because it could be housing, but it could also be businesses.
Okay, infill development, housing slash business. Melvin? This is, this has not been planned to shut the council down.
Mr. Mayor, it's actually very hilarious because on my notepad, I literally just put prioritize housing, infill development, and in parentheses, avoid the shoreline. So wanted to add that in.
Can I?
Henry? Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead. And then I'll go next.
Can I suggest something really quick, though? Because we're kind of spitting out new things right now. And I think that our scribes are running behind us. And so what you just said, Councilmember Willis, wasn't really captured under.
Thank you. Oh, she did it here. We're editing. She did it over here.
Okay, can I, so I think like in, in the improved public safety, and maybe this is an objective, but it's implementing the community crisis response program.
Community crisis response program to be added under improved public safety? Is that the comment? Councilmember Bena?
I'm sorry, what was it? I missed it. Sorry.
Oh, let's, let me see if I can repeat it. The comment, oh, she captured it over here. Okay. Implement community crisis response program.
Community crisis means public emergency or what do you mean?
Again, I apologize, I apologize for the mic, but we want as much as possible to capture all of your comments. The meeting is being recorded.
Right.
And the reason it's being recorded is for two-fold. One is for us to go back and listen to all of what you said and make sure we got it. But it's also for the people who were not able to attend your meeting, if they want to tune in later. Vice Mayor?
Right, yeah. I just want to say on the CCRP, the Community Crisis Response Program, I had that as one of my priorities as well. I think that's, it is public safety, I agree, but I think it's also quality of life because it's public safety for the community at large. But for the mental health person, it's, it's really quality of life, you know?
Henry, do we start now drilling down a little bit more, giving you some more items?
We're just taking last comments for.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we, in a regular way, kind of like what we did with our goals, go one person at a time so people can add anything that you feel like didn't get captured yet? And this is our, our time to add those things and then, and then we kind of.
If you're in agreement?
Close for now.
May I modify that? Can we go through each topic and then read what we have and add what's missing?
Either way, I think you're going to end up at the same place.
I think the only thing that I would like us to do is if we do that, let's do it in a regular way where each person gets time to talk.
That's the process suggestion. Let's take it so we can keep moving. We'll take that and I think that we'll, we're going to end up at the same place, I believe. So, Councilmember Robinson, you've got 30 seconds. What's not up there that you wanted there? No, the question is.
So we were, we're adopting what Councilmember Bana said, right?
Yes.
So we're going to start with, let's say we start with number one, which is housing. And we're going to read first what's already there and then we're going to go one person at a time. Is there anything that was missing?
Would it be helpful if we brought that sheet back over here? Your eyesight's much better than mine. I don't see how any of you can read that stuff.
I believe, I believe that we got all the number ones, right? There's no number ones that are lurking on these sheets.
So I think we got it.
Infill development was also supposed to go number two, economic development.
So do you want to move the sheet closer? Can you see it? Oh, you can see that stuff from where you're sitting? Yo, listen, can we just pull that off maybe and bring it over here? Does that work? As you discuss it? Okay. My ophthalmology appointment has been put off three times. I don't know how on earth you can see all the way. Okay, here's what we've got for number one. I think the process suggestion is to, let's talk about those quickly. And was the process suggestion, is there anything missing that that's where you would add it? Is that the consensus? Then let's go. Housing relocation. You good? Increasing housing.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what housing relocation means.
Okay, whoever put that up there, housing relocation, what does that mean? Is it for people who are evicted? Is it for people who are homeless or?
Yeah, quickly, there have been a couple of scenarios where somebody would have self-evict and they're having a hard time relocating into a new place. So thinking of services to help identify a place and even assistance in getting folks into a new place to avoid homelessness. Or another scenario is unfortunately, in one of our public housing areas, I've had community members say that they felt unsafe or targeted and they needed help just finding a new place to go to. And there wasn't too many mechanisms to pull on outside of advocacy to help relocate people. So I'm thinking of just general relocation services, including when we're dealing with the unhoused to get them into new housing as well.
So it's been amended or supplemented. Relocation, housing relocation services? Does that say enough for where we are right now? Does that say enough? Okay. Because we, we want to have a clear understanding of what we put up here. Was there a comment?
Can I add?
I said we'll put bullet points underneath later.
Oh, okay.
Somewhere, and I'm not sure where we'll fit in there, but I think that we should look at opening up some of the public land that we own and seeing a process of start built on it. We have so much land that the city owns that's just sitting there.
Going through the process of going down the line or just everybody speak out? I don't know.
Well, I thought we were going down the line, but I don't want to lose your comment. If you could hold that. And then let's go through this. And then if there's something you want to add, or as Melvin did, clarify something that's up here. And then any other thoughts that come, we'll add those. Does that work? Okay, we're at increasing housing supply? Is that where we are? Yeah. Any further clarification of what that means? Increase affordable housing? Reduce homelessness? Create path to home ownership? Expand tenant eviction service assistance? Implementation of rental inspection? Is that already up here somewhere? No, I guess not. Okay. Tenant protection and rental assistance? And that somewhat goes with that. And then infill development? And then there was one, Caesar?
And the process. Going through each number, like we're on number one, Doria starts or someone else starts and says, I have one more thing. And then Claudia says, I have one more thing. And then I thought that's what we were doing. Or if we're not, we should just raise our hands.
I think you're right. That's what we're doing. It's just we're going to start with reading so everybody can hear what we already have.
That was the idea.
And, and there was only, he was asking for any clarification. So if people don't understand what's already there, then we can clarify it.
But again, this is your process.
And now we should go down the line. And I think you start from that side.
We've completed the list and Caesar had something he wanted to add for consideration.
What I was adding in there was opening up public land to construct new housing.
Willis, Bena?
Yes, I would like to add.
I really do feel like we, I'm sorry, I'm a press clamber, but I don't want to interrupt you, but I really think that we should give each council member an oppo, but I think he was about to say something.
Thank you. Again, I'm trying to.
I'm okay with the list we have. The only thing I was going to add on the infill development is in parentheses, avoid the shoreline when it comes to housing development.
Avoid shoreline? And Councilmember Bena, I think, were you?
It's Bana, thank you.
Bana. You know, I've heard your name pronounced both ways and thank you for correcting me.
Either way, it's fine. You can call me Sohela.
No, either way it's not. Your name is however you prefer it to be pronounced.
Thank you.
I insist on that with everybody.
I would like to suggest that we collaborate with mom and pop landlords to keep an increased housing pool. And we also need to have a housing inventory to see if our policies are reducing or increasing the number of available housing.
Okay, cooperate and collaborate with mom and pop landlords.
Landlords and keep housing inventory.
And keep housing inventory.
Right. And also accountability of rent program.
And accountability of rent program.
Yeah, so housing inventory.
I think she's putting all one item. And collaborate with mom and pop landlords?
Right.
And your other comment was?
Housing inventory?
Housing inventory.
No, no, that's next item.
Yeah, these are separate items, please. Yeah.
Okay.
And then next one?
Does that, does that capture your intent?
Yes.
Okay. We can collab, we can decide later how the group wants to edit, but I want to make sure we're capturing your intent.
Thank you. And the last one is accountability of rent program.
Accountability of rent program. Okay. Now, we have clarified, we have added, we're back to. Caesar? Mayor, did you talk?
I did not, but I have nothing to add. It's all there for.
Okay, I want to make sure that we aren't missing people.
So I think we need, and this is a little different than the inventory of, or opening up of public land for new housing. I think it's take an inventory of vacant housing, whether it's public or private, because we have a lot of boarded up houses still. And, you know, determine ways of making sure they're, they're filled or repurposed.
Even inventory of vacant housing, public and private. Okay. All right, where are we?
Here.
Here.
What direction? Okay, make this, all right.
The left, to the left.
So I think like, in terms of like, house, hello?
You're good now.
Hello. Implement at least two or three transitional housing projects for unhoused community. Plan for Nistrom Village renovation.
For what renovation? I'm sorry.
Nistrom, Nistrom Village.
Oh, that's the name of, yes, that showed up on several of your lists.
I am just taking my time.
No, that's right. No, no, you go.
She can.
I'm going to push you, but not that fast. Make sure that we're able to record what you're saying.
Plan for Nistrom Village renovation. Plan for starting the construction of McDonald and 12th project, housing project. Support the advancement of key low-income housing development project, at least two. And the last one is plan for housing development, development along San Pablo, McDonald and 23rd corridor.
I'll make sure we capture those. I have those from one of you. And I will pull that sheet so that she can complete it.
Plan for housing development along San Pablo, McDonald and 23rd corridor. Support the advancement of two or three kilo income housing development projects.
Plan for the advancement, the last one, let her catch up.
I have it here.
Yeah, we, we have it in writing. Okay. Because I got that from one of you. And it was not lost. It was just, that list would have been 300. And I put all your priorities up. I tried to collapse them as best I could. Okay, now who is turned? Yes.
Yeah. So the only thing that I would like to add is, I really believe we make great strategic plans for different things. So the new homeless plan, which we haven't actually adopted yet, I think it's on the agenda.
It's been on your agenda twice.
If we adopt it, operationalize it. Because I think it addresses a lot of these things in here. So making sure that it's included in budgets, operationalize it. Once, once adopted. And then maybe I just want to speak into the record that when I, when I think about the advancement of key housing developments, I think about all of those housing developments that are hanging out there that we might not need to name by name now, but I'm going to name them so everyone knows what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking about making sure that Miraflores happens. I'm thinking about making sure that Nistrom Village happens. I'm thinking about making sure the 12th and McDonald project happens. And I'm thinking about making sure that Metro Walk happens.
And could you give those to us? And then during the break, we will.
Yeah, I already gave them to you. I have them in my notes. I just want to say that those are examples of infill development that has low-income housing, that means a lot of the things that we're talking about. And they're already in motion. We just need to make sure, give them the support they need to happen.
I, in preparation for this meeting, discovered this document. You've seen that?
Yeah, we had read it.
But you haven't discussed it. I noticed that it's been on two of your agendas and it's been rolled over.
Calendar now.
We'll talk about that later. But as I was going through it, you spent some good money. This is a very good product, actually. And I would urge you at some point to make the time to have a presentation and discussion around it. But this is really a very excellent document.
It's on our agenda for Tuesday night in consent calendar. And I would love to actually have it as a discussion item so everyone is fully, time, time is always a problem.
I would, oh, I have stepped out of my role the whole time I've stood here. So no point in stopping now. I would urge you to move some of your items to the top of your agenda. I would urge you to tell people who are presenting, I've been observing your council meetings, not just in the last two weeks, several, you know, over a long period of time. You have major items on the agenda that you never get to. And this one has been kicked over twice. So when we talk about, and that's for another discussion, it's one that McLaughlin suggested, about how you work together collaboratively, move the agenda, move the important stuff to the top, tell presenters they have 15 minutes.
I think like this is what goal setting is important because then it's also representing not only in the budget, but in the agenda. What we discuss on the agenda should be also tied to what are the priorities that we will see, that we want to move, right?
Okay. All right. Let's do a time check. I believe it is two minutes after 12. Would you like to take your break now? And I think what we said, well, we've already taken the break. You want to keep going. Let's keep going. Keep going. Are you okay? Are you okay? All right. Okay, we'll keep going. All right. So we've done, now we're on two, right? And what we did, said again, we're just going to talk through these. And if there is any comment for clarification, we'll make those. And at the end of that, keep pulling the sheet down. At the end of that, if other thoughts occur to you, several of you have given me lots of information. And again, I could not include all those on those sheets down there. So if there's something that really needs to be lifted up, I urge you to do that. But let's first, I think we agreed, we talk through these and see if there are any comments for clarification. Is that where we are? All right. And we're going to start with job training. And that includes youth who are not college-ready. and that includes youth who are not college-ready, and it includes also juniors and seniors, and I think you meant like middle school, high school, is that what it is? Oh, seniors, meaning senior adults? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I'm sorry? Oh, that's right, oh, right, it's juniors and seniors, right, in high school who are not ready. Okay, is there any need for further clarification on that, Melvin?
We don't need to elaborate on it.
You're good?
But yeah, just getting into the schools and being more intentional about saying, hey, if you're not college-ready, you can get training and get paid into a career right away out of high school, and just being very intentional about that.
Yes, okay. Any other comments of clarification? Revitalize businesses. Any clarification on that? That showed up on, I think, every list that I got from everybody.
I think whoever put it needs to expand, because I don't know what that means.
Okay, all right, let's clarify more about revitalized business. Councilmember Willis, and then back to Councilmember-
I did not put that, I did not put that up there myself, but when I see that, I do remember having conversations with folks in the Arts Commission art community around some funds that the Art Commission has been able to accumulate that can go to revitalize in different areas in Richmond. And I was thinking, and I'll say out loud, that part of that fund that we've got from, that has accumulated within the Arts Commission, part of that could go to helping different corridors and businesses revitalize, and I hate using this word, but I guess for lack of a better term, give a facelift and identity more to some of our corridors that are heavily utilized, and make them to where people are like, oh, what's going on over here? I want to go see what's going on there. So, that's what I think about revitalizing businesses, is how are we attracting people to say, walk in here, you're not going to regret it, and how are we using some funds that we accumulated in partnership with business stakeholders and other community members to do that for our small businesses who have already been operating in a community for, you know, even over a decade, even shorter than that.
Councilmember Robinson, then Mr. Mayor.
Did you have your hand up before?
We're clarifying now what we've got up here.
So, I just was going to say that if we can go through the list, I do believe that some of these things were like, not the exact things that we each had on our list, so we go through the list and then add in our own words what we were wanting to include, that maybe these things would get cleared up. Because I, yeah.
I think that's part of what you're trying to do now.
If I might, I've been trying to speak, but I'm trying to be respectful of everyone else.
Mr. Mayor.
So, I put that on there, and the reason I put it on there is because I hear a lot of businesses saying it's difficult to interface with the city, so I want to revitalize businesses by making it easier for them to get permitting done, to have inspections done in a timely manner. I also agree with what Councilmember Willis said, which is to work with businesses for facelifts of corridors. And I would also like, it goes back to the job training. I would like to see if we could institute a program where businesses could actually apprentice high school students to learn the business by getting extra credits, by working in their businesses.
And developing some skills. Let's see, where are we now? Yes, back to McLaughlin.
Okay, so, under this increased revenue, I thought we were also putting just basic economic development. Is that like, is that, should that be a bullet point, or should that just be increased revenue slash economic development?
Yeah.
The top? Okay, so, in terms of economic development, and this fits in with the revitalized business, maybe revitalize and attract business, because it's not only revitalize current businesses, but attract.
But and attract, just put it in.
Also, under this category, number two, I would say, address fair taxation from those who can afford it most, like, for example, a big oil company, you know, things like that we need to address.
All right, what did we decide about economic development, though? Did we have that captured elsewhere, and that's where you want to talk about how it enhances increased revenue? What do you want to do with that?
We put it there as, I'm sorry, Doria, we put it there as increased revenue slash economic development. So, what Councilmember Robinson is saying is that we will need a better title for this, but one of the goals inside that is increased revenue, right?
So, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, I think at this point, we shouldn't worry too much about the wordsmithing of titles. I think that as we have these items that are falling underneath it, and we prioritize them, a title will become clear, you know, what we're putting in the cell, and what we're, you know, kind of, what's important to us. But I do feel like we're falling off the track here of being our disciplined selves. I think that we could go through and just go ahead and state each one, not worry so much about, you know, getting all the details, and then go down the line and capture everyone's comments and additions and things like that, so that we can, because we have other, we have now five other goals that we need to go through.
Why don't you start, Councilmember Robinson, and then I will, and then-
Well, I mean, I, so, if I can, if everyone's okay. So, the things that are currently on the list is revitalized business, we have some details on that, increase city revenue, which is the main category, develop a port strategic plan, expand vocational training programs, infill development as it pertains to economic developments, that's business development, and then fair taxation as it pertains to businesses. And so, then I would like to add a few things to this, and then I'm going to pass, I would like us to go that way, so everyone could get what they want to do, and I can find this back, so I have to use this. So, I don't think, is the microphone, yes, okay. So, the first item I had was to right-size the Economic Development Department, and that means to either increase staffing, because right now we have very slim staffing there, and also make sure we have the staffing experience that we need to recruit businesses, to help recruit businesses to the city, and develop like a marketing plan for the city. I'm not, I'm not done. Yeah, I have a couple of other things. So, implementation of the Green Blue New Deal. Right, right, so this is all a part of one item, and that one item is to right-size the staffing, the Economic Development Department.
So, these are subcategories under that?
It's, this is one thing, just thinking about our Economic Development Department.
So, it's right-size Economic Development, comma?
Right.
So, okay.
And in that right sizing, we want to consider not just bodies, not just the FTEs we have, but the actual experience that they have.
Experience and qualifications.
And so, it's a very different person who has experience, you know, recruiting large manufacturing businesses to a city, right, than to somebody who is implementing a local, by local campaign. Those are two different sets of skills. And so, we want to make sure we have both sets of skills within our Business Development Department, or something like that, like actually-
And you had more to add to that, right?
I'm just saying that that's right-size the Economic Development Department, and then, yes, marketing plan is a part of that.
Just put MKG, marketing plan for the city.
So, it's like we need to be telling our story in a compelling way-
I'm going to push you on.
-to attract businesses. Sorry, I'm going to keep going. The next one is supporting small businesses, and my focus on supporting small businesses was increasing access to capital, support for capacity building such as, you know, putting accounting systems and kind of working with taxes. And then the next one was, we've heard this before, but it's not explicitly on there, that is creating, developing the Entertainment and Arts District along McDonald Avenue or 23rd Street to make it like have a clear identity along a corridor. And then finally, I also had development of the Hilltop District, so that includes resources to improve quality of life for Hilltop residents, and develops the local economy.
Very good. Okay, Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. I will add, I agree with these, I will add that we, one of the things is hiring a port director that actually has experience managing and directing a port with the new visions of green businesses, like the offshore win. I think I will add in the creation of the strategic port plan that is led by the port director and includes offshore wins opportunities.
Let's make sure we're capturing that. Could you repeat the last one again, because I didn't get a lot?
Like, you have it here on develop a port-
Oh, you got it up here, okay, good.
Like, it's here, develop a port strategic plan that is led by the port director and includes offshore win opportunities here. I also would like to add that the support and implementation of the Maritime Academy related to the port, like, and shipbuilding, that is connected with Kennedy High School. And then the last one is continue to support youth works in creating a pathway, a pathline of jobs that resident, youth residents can go through either businesses here or filling the vacancies in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Okay, thanks. I think as we get further along, some of these will fold in, like I thought of the Maritime Academy as well, but I thought it'd fit into the job training for youth who are not college-ready, but I think, you know, spelling it out is fine as well. I noticed that Councilmember Robinson mentioned, and it didn't quite make it, so I will mention it again. Finalize the Green Blue New Deal. Also, and I know this has been mentioned, but downtown revitalization, I mean, do you think we need to put it on there as a separate thing? It's been mentioned a lot with the arts, I think is an important component that Councilmember Robinson mentioned. Advance the public, the East Bay Public Bank, that's something we're doing with Berkeley and Oakland. And the fair taxation, I think, make sure adding to that is from big business. I don't want our community to think we're wanting to get more from them, or nickel and dime them to death. It's more from big business. And things like, I could get down to all these nitty-gritty things, like grocery store attraction, but maybe that's all fitting into the economic development. But if you want to put grocery store attraction, that would be my last thing.
I would just make a quick comment. I don't think anybody has mentioned anything yet that you either did not mention to me, or you gave me your notes. And so, I think you appreciate why you didn't see all of this. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, something that I've been thinking about is creating what I call commercial neighborhood hubs, so that we don't have food deserts. Also, for increasing revenue, I believe that we need to work very hard at establishing hotels so that we can increase tourism to the city of Richmond, because every time someone has something here, they end up in Emeryville, or Oakland, or some other place. So, we need our own hotels, and if we had one next to the Crane Way, we could actually start getting business from San Francisco, so that people could stay in Richmond.
Development plan.
Right.
Others, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, because you had some things you haven't mentioned, I need to go back to my notes, that you gave me, I'll remind you of them.
Well, you know, I've been trying to save them for the right categories.
All right, don't get you don't drop them, because I have them.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you make sure that you capture that he said especially near the Crane Way?
Yeah, and I need your help to slow the speakers down, so that, especially for those of you who are watching the paper, to make sure we capture it. Again, it's being recorded, but I think it's helpful that you can see it as we continue our discussions. Councilmember Zapata. It's to you now. Oh, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's hard to know which category, but I would also like to consider establishing a water taxi that goes from community to community, so that we don't have to have all the cars driving-
Is that an infrastructure issue?
Yeah, that would be infrastructure, but it would also-
Let's capture it, though, let's capture it, so we don't lose it. Councilmember Zapata.
It's similar over there, but maybe we add a marketing slash communication team. We have to have a PIO, someone that communicates to the public about issues, concerns, but also things happening. Then we have to do a better job at it, that's one way that we can bring in more revenue. Focusing on the type of businesses and jobs that we bring in, so making sure that we bring in businesses that are going to bring in the jobs that are going to help our community move forward. So, we continuously bring in businesses that are low-paying jobs, we're never going to provide those opportunities to our community, so we have to provide those opportunities. It was mentioned already, grocery store, I'm going to add in their hospital as well.
Hospitals?
Yes. It's in our charter, but also people want to live where they'll have access to basic stuff. And I'm going to slow down a little bit there. Okay, and then buy and promote local businesses.
Buy and promote local businesses.
Because they're going to pay us taxes, so if we are buying from local and we're promoting local, that's just a good circle or back to us. Improve the process for the Economic Development Team.
For the Economic Development Team?
Economic Development Team, yeah, right. The staff that's doing this, figuring out how do we help them from applying, my colleagues were saying this earlier, applying for a permit, to figuring out how do we get them on the list to buy from them, to being able to figure out what needs they have. It could include parking, et cetera, et cetera. So, just figuring out the process of economic development.
Sure.
And enhance slash improve all shopping districts. That includes-
Enhance and improve all shopping districts.
shopping districts, includes Hilltop, includes 23rd Street, it includes McDonald, Richmond, anywhere else, San Pablo Avenue, all these corridors of businesses that we need to be able to help out, and we got to be able to help them. And then, taking back our name, we have a really horrible history of giving away our name. We have Point Pino Regional Shoreline, nobody knows is in Richmond. More than half of the Berkeley Hills are in Richmond. The Berkeley Bay campus, it's not in Berkeley, it's in Richmond. So, making sure that we don't give away our name, we're going to bring in more economic opportunities if we start saying, look at this great thing that Richmond is doing, and we're putting our name to it. So, let's take that back. Let's be proud of our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember-
Oh, El Cerrito Grocery Store.
I'm sorry, one last comment?
The sidewalk, yeah, thank you for that, El Cerrito Grocery Store. The sidewalk, as you enter, you are in El Cerrito, but once you're in the physical store, that's our tax. Welcome to Richmond.
Put a sign up. Councilmember Bena.
Thank you. I like this process very much. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. We can hear each other out loud, learn about, you know, our way of thinking, so we can work together better in the future. I'm very happy about this. So, we all talk about bringing businesses, revitalizing the city, economic development. We don't talk about actually talking to the business. So, I think we need to directly talk to businesses and provide incentives. I agree with Vice Mayor that we should tax Chevron as much as we can. Chevron cannot go away. But other businesses have options. We need to provide tax incentive to businesses, big, medium, small, bring them to the city as much as possible. We need to have a reputation as a business-friendly city. We cannot claim we want to revitalize the city, the businesses, economic development, this, that, without taking the preliminary steps. So, I think we need to work with businesses, that's very important, to build relationship with the business community. I also believe, as it was mentioned, that we need a business person like a commercial broker. I also believe, as it was mentioned, that we need a business person like a commercial broker. I'm a real estate broker, I can never be a commercial broker, they have networking, they have knowledge, they know how to, I mean, it's a totally different experience. It doesn't come with a license, it doesn't come with anything, it's years, decades of experience. We need somebody who knows all the who's who in the local business in the Bay Area, and invite them to the city of Richmond, and along with giving incentives and everything, we can bring businesses. I mean, all the goals that we have for housing takes money, without generating revenue, we cannot have any of that. So that's very important. And that one important thing, I'm representing District Four, around 20,000 people, middle class. They don't spend their money in this part of Richmond and the other districts. We need to connect communities. Connecting communities, uh, we can talk about the details, but they, they don't go to restaurants here, they don't use print shops for, nothing. We need to connect communities and bring all that uh, money spending and taxes here. We need to improve the grant department at the city, bring more grants, I believe we need to build grant capacity. I would like to suggest that all my fellow council members uh, should attend more regional conferences. We need to work regionally with other entities, we need to learn what the trend is, uh, where the money is, well, what the policies are, look ahead. So working regionally is very important. Finally, I think we may want to start building ties with UC Berkeley, it may help us.
Building ties with UC Berkeley.
Yep.
Yes, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Willis.
Does this work?
Yay.
It does.
Yeah, so the couple of things that I did want to add is thinking about um, social hubs when it comes to economic development, bars, lounges, places that people say, hey, I want to go to Richmond and go to this place specifically, rather than the other way around, which is, hey, do you want to go to Emeryville, Berkeley, or San Francisco to this one social gathering club outside of the city? How are we attracting some of that out here? And one thing I'll mention while they're transcribing some of that is, over the weekends, there is a lot of social activity starting to happen, and I think it would be good just to add a brick and mortar to that. I think that could also help out with some traffic safety issues and everything too, just from the observation where I'm seeing on the weekend where I live at, there's a lot of social activity happening, but not many places to go do it, so we just take up the entire street, which is fine, but also thinking about how are we attracting folks to come here too? And that also falls into the skate ring. And um, the other thing I was thinking about too, and this comes from my experience, just suffering from low self-esteem and self-confidence issues, is with our cities just having some sort of a counseling support for even our small businesses, like different ways and tools we can work with them, saying, hey, if you add this, this may be able to make help you operate your business easier, if you have these aesthetics, this may be able to be, attract things.
Marketing support?
Yeah, mar- marketing support or just implementation, like there was a beautiful, I'll share real briefly, a beautiful story I heard of one community member a while ago, she told me that she just went up and down 23rd Street, because a lot of folks were just accepting cash only and not card, and she talked them into actually adding a debit card machine, so it gave them more options for revenue. And there's another studio that's just open for two years, and they've just been trying to figure it out, but they could also use a way to get that marketing support out there, how to get folks to be more attracted to their business, different things like that, like let's offer counseling services for small businesses that are trying to make it in Richmond.
Is that a part of the economic development program, or is that something outside of that?
I would say it's part of economic development, because I'm just saying, like, as we're talking about economic development, let's uh, uh, offer a counseling and um, uh, uh, professional services for those who are navigating opening up a business for the first time, or may want to improve their business moving forward. That's what I'm thinking, I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Yeah, I mean, that currently exists, right, that's currently, at least, the intention is that it's there. But the staffing doesn't match the intention, so that capacity building, which is like the large category that all of these things would fit under, the intention is there, but we're, we're not staffing it.
I need to bring you back to your process.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, you know, just name it in general, it can go wherever, but as, just naming it.
Yeah, it's part of the discussion, absolutely part of the discussion.
Okay, let's. As part of the revenue, uh, I did have, I did ask for a vacancy tax, uh, to increase revenue.
What kind of tax?
A vacancy tax.
A vacancy tax?
Right.
Was that for uh, housing and?
Uh, it's, it's, it's for, it's for any, uh, any properties that are unused, um, you know, to, to help pay for abatement, to help uh, uh, you know, uh, keep, keep our city from being um, unused and, and attracting uh, lights, thank you.
Just for clarification, would that be a vacancy tax on all vacant property, both improved and unimproved?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure what we're talking about, okay. Uh, let's see.
And, and we've already said it, but I want to reiterate, a, a grants department.
Yes, right, exactly, okay.
Both.
Both, the vacancy tax, okay. I want to make sure everybody got a chance to speak on the items that we're talking about. Are we good at this point? Okay.
I think, I would like to add since the mayor.
Can I hear you, Councilmember Jimenez?
I would like to add since the mayor, um, just add um, a detailed tax, I would like to also see how we can start looking at the UUT tax, and in, in a way that is more progressive, so, kind of like whoever has more income can pay more. The utility user tax is that UUT, uh, for those who don't know the acronym.
Did everybody hear and understand that? I, I want to make sure that all your comments are heard, not just by you, but by the public as well. Your city attorney is here and will advise you that everything you say can and will be used against you. But we need it on the record. It can and will be used against you. I'm a witness, yes.
I think I might also, before you guys take that down, sorry, one more, can I add in there, beautify our entryways to the city. As people are coming in to shop, we want to make sure that they're welcome to it. We want to beautify all of our city, but that, that brings in revenue, because it's going to allow people to feel more safe coming into a certain part of Richmond, right, it's like, oh, it looks nice, and that's just where we start. We want to beautify everywhere, all of our streets, but I think that's one way to allow people to come in more.
Councilmember Willis?
Thank you for jogging my memory, when I was talking about social gathering hubs too, I specifically was thinking near our transportation corridors as well, just wanted to add that in there.
Okay, I need to do a process check to make sure where we are. Have we gone through all of the lists that we were going to clarify and add comments on? I don't think we have.
We only done two, we need to do.
Where are we? We need to do three and?
Four more.
Three, four, five, and six?
Yes.
Oh, come on, we got to move it, bring up three. Be succinct. You've got 30 seconds.
I don't have a microphone, I would love to be able to have one.
But I just want to say on the UUT progressive thing, that was where my comments about um, Chevron getting fair taxation from Chevron, being at the, the, the most prosperous business in the city, um, came from, because we used to have a ballot measure that was pulled back, that was to get fair taxation from Chevron on its utility users' tax. Everyone else pays 10%, Chevron doesn't.
Um, I second that.
Okay, thank you for that comment, all right, we're going to be succinct. I had a professor who used that word a lot. You're to clarify, clarifying comments, okay? Anything to clarify regarding the renovation of the library, we're talking about the main library, I assume, okay? Anything to clarify there? Increasing public access to city facilities. Any clarifying comments? Infrastructure, capital needs. I will make a comment, I did get from at least one of you, uh, and I think I got it from more than one of you, that you really want to have a separate discussion on your capital improvement projects. I just put that out there, you don't need to do, deal with it now, but during your budget process, I did hear that. Improve social determinants of health. Any clarifying? Access to parks, playgrounds, open space. Recreation. Funding for new library. Renovation of main library. Do we have that twice? I think we have that twice, uh, maybe, do we? I think it's up there twice, anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll get to all of that. Okay, but it also, renovate that library. Increase hours of operations for parks and recreation facilities. Increase sidewalk repairs. Illegal dumping, and we know what that means, get on it. Improve parking access, accessibility in new, in neighborhoods. That's right. Improve maintenance, repairs, and landscaping of public property. Improve community, that's not improve, implement, crisis response. Something else goes with that, it's crisis response program, yeah, okay, all right. Was it, were any, I didn't hear any clarifying comments. Is there anything in this category that you didn't put up here that you want urgently to add? Did we skip something? I see Councilmember Robinson and Jimenez are having a private conversation.
I thought that uh, the, yeah, we always have some conversations. I thought that implementing the public, uh, the community crisis response program goes into public safety, I made that comment and. Uh, it's in both, ah, because, yeah, you, you mentioned.
It should be both, yeah.
Okay, um, okay.
So.
Councilmember Robinson, who I think was just itching to make a comment, where were you?
No, I thought we were, if we were going to work down the line, then I'll, I'll wait for that.
So, all right, I'll go first here.
Actually, we're starting.
You want to start with Councilmember Robinson?
Well, that's what I was saying.
I don't care where we start, wherever we want to start.
Yeah, we don't want to get mixed up, so.
All right, so um, I just want to add a few things to this list, and that would be, um, I'm trying to weed out the ones that are already been said, so I want to explicitly say um, uh, support a relaunch of the capital campaign design process to rebuild MLK Community Center.
Rebuilding MLK.
Community Center, yeah. It was like, uh, yeah, supportive, I'm, I'm waiting for them to write a little bit. The next one is um, improve communications about existing recreational programs.
Improve communications regarding recreational programs.
Existing recreational, yeah, because we have a lot of programs that a lot of people don't know anything about.
Oh, okay, so existing, yes, underline that.
The next one is um, target two to three parks in currently underserved or under-resourced community, communities to improve the infrastructure.
Target uh, communities?
No, uh, target two to three parks.
I'm sorry, what parks?
Target two to three parks.
Oh, two to three parks?
Yeah, and currently underserved or under-resourced communities to improve their park infrastructure.
To improve parking.
The next one is to um, build three to four soccer fields in the next four years on city-owned, in city parks.
Hold, hold on a second. Build three to four soccer fields? I heard that more than once.
In the next three to four years, um, in city parks.
Okay.
The next is um, establish a tree maintenance and long-term care and replacement plan for the 60,000 trees in Richmond.
Tree maintenance and replacement?
Long-term care replacement plan. And I included in that, creating a position for a city arborist.
Okay, and underneath that? City arborist.
The next one is bring back street sweeping.
You don't have any street sweeping?
We have.
It's, is it, it's not, it's not, it's not enforced, the parking issues around the street sweeping is not currently enforced, so we need, this is the other part of this, so my whole sentence was, bring back street sweeping with an informed and equitable parking enforcement, based on ground conditions of each neighborhood.
Is that clear to everybody? I, I, you've clarified it for me, because first I thought you said.
The issue with the street sweeping is that it's not currently enforced due to COVID and other issues, and so it, many cars are in place, the streets aren't actually getting cleaned, and then there's issues around parking, so that we haven't addressed, and, yeah.
That clarifies.
Blah, blah, blah. And um, and, and uh, yeah, that's good.
Okay, now I think we're at Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
No, we are here and then.
Oh, I thought you spoke already.
No, I haven't.
What were all those things you put up there?
I haven't. I haven't.
Go for it.
It's on the, on the record, I haven't. Now it's my turn. I have the mic.
It is your turn.
I have the mic.
And you have a mic, okay.
I think like, I am going, like, some of them, you don't need, I am going to make sure it's on the record, but some of them are already written, so, but I just want to go, so. Increase hours of recreation facilities, particularly swimming centers and recreation center, if you can put swim center and recreation, that would be great. Increase, oh, let's. Thank you. They want increase and improve recreation programs for summer programs and other programs during the uh, calendar year. I will, no, I think, I, this is, this is new. I would like that um, uh, I agree with the, build the soccer fields, but I will, I would like to have a shorter timeline frame for maybe uh, a small side fields that in one or two year, we built at least two more, a small uh, side fields in the parks that we have, and, and opportunities. Analysis of the part-time employees in the recreation department to achieve the goals to increase hours in the facilities and have more programming opportunities. When I see it, and I wanted to make sure that when I said increase hours, is that we want, one of the goals to uh, have the recreation centers open during the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, not only Saturdays, but. I think I will span on the Martin Luther King Park, that we should create a plan for Martin Luther King Park to become an sports center for Richmond. And create a plan for renovation of the recreation center and others, uh, community centers, as we are doing with the uh, library, right, that we got some grants, and now we are trying to uh, put some more uh, refunds in, in that. And I will stop with that, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, um, so I would like to make sure for quality of life here, we have our park bathrooms opened, and I know it's a challenge, because there's sometimes security, but really, it's a quality of life issue, and also lighting in our parks, so bathrooms and lightings in our park. Secondly, and this is a different item, I think uh, we need a plan on this, again, quality of life for wastewater treatment and sewer system, uh, system, infrastructure im- improvement, I know we have a, a subcommittee working on that.
Mr. Mayor, that was on your list, I was going to remind you of that.
Okay, see, we overlap a lot.
I did read it.
So, okay. Also, and this is already funded, and I expected to be, I expect it is moving forward soon, the B, the Booker T. Anderson Community Center, um, rebuild, it had a fire, so that has to be rebuilt, so those are three, and then the fourth one, I, which is my last one, is um, we need more recreation staff, and I want to put in a, a particular um, plug for someone, um, a recreation staff person, in addition to the one person that we have at the senior center, I have already talked with the city manager, but um, recreation staff for senior center.
That's a specific budget request, it sounds like.
It is.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, um, uh, something that we haven't considered is transportation as a quality of life, and so uh, I, I would, I would like for us to figure out how we can increase transportation for underserved. increase transportation for underserved communities. I would, I would, I would like to prioritize bike and pedestrian trails so that people have places to, to walk, to stroll, to promenade. Um, and I would also like to put in a special plug for CyberTram, which is a, uh, solar-powered, uh, light rail point-to-point transportation system, which we have considered in the past, and which I think would not only increase, uh, traffic, uh, or decrease car traffic, but increase public transit, and also provide jobs for, in the city of Richmond in terms of manufacturing the rail system.
I wanna make sure we captured all of your items. You're going pretty fast. We have impre, uh, increased transportation for underserved communities, uh, revisit CyberTram project, but I thought I heard another one still.
Well, for, for the, uh, increased, uh, increased tran, transportation, I was, uh, specifically bike trails.
That's what it was.
Bike trails and pedestrian.
Right. That's what, that's what it was, yes.
And, and so, um, and in terms of CyberTram, I didn't know where to put it, but, but it also, uh, will provide jobs in the city of Richmond since the manufacturing would start here. Uh, and then, and then finally, uh, I want to echo what's been said, but the parks that I would choose is Lucas, Shields Reed, and Parchester, uh, which are, which are places where I think we should, we, we should invest in soccer fields.
And I, I've seen those before, but let's make sure we capture them here. Could you say, I know Parkchester, I, I know that one. Is it Shields?
Uh, Shields Reed.
I've been there. Shields Reed, I know that one.
And, uh, Lucas Park.
And Lucas Park.
Mm-hmm. And, um, also to increase recreation, uh, late-night recreation, I'd like to see, uh, the midnight basketball reinstated. I'd also like to have some, uh, late evening footsault, um, uh, tournaments begin.
I, I think that that can go with some of the comments I heard about increasing the hours, but also increasing the days, uh, but certainly increasing the hours would go there too. And I've heard that from more than two of you. Mr. Mayor, is that all for now? We've come back, you're not done.
That's it for now.
You're just taking a break. Okay, Councilmember Zepeda.
So a lot of these, uh, you know, knew that I had a, a meeting this past Saturday for District Two, and a lot of these come right from those, sharing with, miss, with the mayor here, some of the sticky notes that we had, so a lot of these are from there. Uh, uh, public safety center. Uh, I know that we need a new police department, 'cause that one we're renting, so that could also fall.
We need a new police substation, I think you mean. Is that what you said?
So that's under, I'm not sure what it would be, but I think it might fall under different ones, because this public safety center potentially will be police, fire, a hospital, something else, so it's all encompassing.
Police, fire.
And it'll go into public safety too, yeah.
Yeah, improve public safety.
Yeah. Uh, uh, let's see here, raised crosswalks.
Raised crosswalks.
Yes. That will improve people's quality of life, especially when we have no ADA access in some areas, so making sure that people can cross safely from one side to the other.
Going across that boulevard that I heard about last time.
Without getting ran over.
I shouldn't be, uh, adding to your complexities, but it was not lost on me.
Um, red light, uh, safety cameras, and this will also go under the public safety, but, um, EV transit, electric vehicle transit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, more lighting around our community. Uh, fire prevention.
Another issue.
Uh, community centers in every community.
Fire prevention, community centers in every?
In every community. There's communities right now that don't have community centers. They have no gathering place.
The rest of you know what that means, every community. Is that every district? Is that?
I think every, never could cancel, at least, or every section of the city should have access.
So I'm sure you understand it, okay.
Yeah, so every, we should have a community center within, we can use, never would cancel as a, as a way, 'cause they're already encompassed a group of people, but I think that in every corner of our city, we should have access to a senior community center, just community centers in, in general. Um, I'm not sure where to put this, but I think it might go in here, using roofs as parks.
Using what?
Roofs, the roofs, the buildings, as we're building.
Oh, roofs, I said roofs, roofs.
So getting creative with how we use roofs. We can use it for solar as well, but there's a lot of places in our city where they might not have access to parks, so just getting creative with maybe building parks on top of, of roofs as we're building new, uh, construction. Definitely quality of life will be to eliminate sideshows. Uh, not only is it polluting, uh, it's a, a big hazard. Uh, dog parks, uh, community events.
What about dog parks? What about?
Uh, people want dog parks.
Okay.
Yeah, I was saying, yeah.
So, increase dog parks and make them available?
They want available, yeah, so it could be more parks, more dog parks.
Just wanna clarify what we're talking about, okay.
Uh, community events, uh, this also in every community, some communities where that they don't have community events, they're very clustered in some areas, so we wanna decluster them, put them all around. Uh, train, uh, train noises, train crossings, and overpasses or underpasses, so.
Train noises, train crossings, and?
So minimize train noise.
What are we gonna do about the crossings?
Train crossings, make sure that they are safe.
Okay.
Potentially putting in underpasses or overpasses.
Okay.
Making sure the trains are not blocking communities in. Uh, and then I have, uh, air monitoring. And bike routes.
And what?
Bike routes.
And bike routes, okay. All right, now, before other people take up, the other members' councils' chances to speak, do you have a quick question, a clarifying comment on what you heard?
Yeah.
Quick.
I, I want to say that when the bike routes, can we say that we can, uh, to plan for a cyclovia in the city of Richmond? Cyclovia is just kinda like a bike, um, every Sunday in Columbia, um, the city, eh, the major cities close some routes.
Oh, you said closure.
For people to do bike rides around the city.
Closure, so.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And I have just one addition on what, um, Councilmember, um, Zepeda said about noise with trains and such. Can we expand that to just say, um, what is, how is it presented there? Minimize train noises and industrial business noise, because, um, I'll tell you, Marina Bay is often very upset by the noises from the industrial businesses, so I would like to get that in there.
Our writing is getting a little, uh, small, but I wanna capture what Councilmember Zepeda said, because it was more than train noise. What I heard was train crossings.
Yep, so she's got it down below.
Oh, it's down below, okay, all right.
And then, uh, underpasses or overpasses, seeing where else we might need them.
Okay.
Samantha, can you end the bike routes, can you say it's events, like, it's not just bike routes, but it's just event for bike.
All right, now you don't get, you don't get to edit other people's clarification comments until we come back. All right, where are we? Councilmember B. Thank you. Um, I like all the ideas about parks and everything.
I believe we need to have a new MOU with West Contra Costa Unified School District, plus the needed budget for accessing school, uh, sports facilities and playgrounds of schools. In addition, we need, um, uh, to buy a park property in District Four, um, because in general, I, I'd, uh, talked earlier about, um, connecting communities, so 20,000 people in District Four spend money here, we need to provide some services. We do not receive much services, so we need to increase services to District Four, and I would like it to start by purchasing a park property in District Four, and I explain later how it relates to public safety as well. Um, I would like us to have a bike park. Bike park is a place where, um, it imitates, um, streets for children to learn about traffic signs, about biking and everything, um, to, to promote the culture of biking and everything. Uh, I would like to add to community events, cultural festivals, and poetry nights. And I think it's essential for the city to collaborate with the county in District Four for improving quality of life, because without collaborating with the county, quality of life cannot be improved in District Four. It's very important, because it's partly city, partly unincorporated county.
Oh, that's what.
And, uh, like pieces of puzzle, you know, intertwined together, that it's essential, absolutely essential, to collaborate with the county. Um, I would like to, uh, suggest, um, that we, uh, have parking permits for areas, like we can hire a consultant to plan, uh, for area permits, similar to the city of Berkeley, to address parking issues. Uh, maybe we can provide some public parkings, where parking is very, um, uh, restricted in certain areas. And, yeah, I would like to emphasize on parking enforcement for abandoned vehicles too. I think that's it for quality of.
All right. Councilmember Willis.
Um, I think the, a lot of it has already been covered, so I won't reiterate, but one thing that's sticking out, that's sticking out for me, um, is, uh, what's the best way to put this? Just addressing, uh, mental health in a more preventative way, so having counseling and healing centers for those in our community who just need somebody to talk to that can also provide resources, and also making sure that those services and counseling programs are culturally competent. Um, the county's considering putting $80,000 towards a feasibility study for an African-American Wellness and Resource Center and creating hubs throughout the county, so thinking, how are we doing that for our communities who are going through, through something and just need somebody there to help improve that quality of life too? I, there's a lot of folks going through it, and I think we need to focus on mental health in a more holistic approach, not just in a reactive approach like we allocated our crisis response revenue.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Councilmember Willis? We're, this is number what?
Oh.
The ring. How many up there?
And I do wanna give a shout-out to basketball courts too. I'm, I like soccer, but I like basketball.
And then Vice Mayor.
So, just, just to kind of jump in, and kind of, I, I realize that what I missed too was to mention mental, mental health, and that we're working with the county to bring more mental health services to, um, to Richmond, and I, I feel like that needs, like, a plan, because there's lots of different ways you can do it. You can do it in the schools, you can do it, you know, through centers, you can do it through existing county services, through promoting their, their phone lines, so a plan. And similarly, you know, we've heard parking a bunch of different times, and especially with this focus on infill development, I think we need a strategic parking and kind of, a parking and transportation plan for the city that matches our planned, um, development, housing developments, where we're planning to increase housing, and we also need to match that with our transportation and parking plans.
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
Yes, so just to.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin, and we're going to, after that comment, we're going to sheet number what?
Just hold on, if you could.
Oh, she said leave that up there for now.
Um, what were you gonna say, Henry? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, you've got a comment.
Okay, so my two comments are, one, um, to hold a joint school board and city council meeting. I've also, I've already talked with the superintendent, and, uh, he's on board, um, in the fall, he thought, would be best, so, uh, that is one thing. The other thing, we've already talked about unhoused, um, transitional villages and permanent supportive housing, but I just wanna make sure in quality of life, we address services for unhoused. So, um, even if we, they, they're, you know, not in a transitional village, that we provide the shower power and all that kinda stuff.
Thank you. Uh, yes, speak into the mic so we can hear you.
Sorry, I wanna make sure that you captured the point that I said, the strategic parking and transportation plan, um, that is kind of matching our housing development.
To the extent that you can read what's being transcribed, I appreciate that. Uh, come back if we missed key words, 'cause when we go through this, we need to remember what it was that you said.
Yeah, as we are talking here about mental health and health services, I think, like, I don't know if we have said that, but, um, kinda like a strengthened relationship with the county, um, yeah, because the county also is in charge of providing a lot of.
Strengthen relationships with county. I think we've got that, and I've heard that.
Is there? Okay, perfect.
I heard that in my previous comments. Uh, I need to check with you. I see people are going for coffee and water, and do you need a 10-minute break before we continue? What is your? Yes.
I said yes.
Okay, 10-minute break, and 10 minutes exactly.
And before I say yes, I want to add that, uh, for the homeless services, that we're intentional and, uh, have follow-through.
Yes, yeah, but you got that whole book over there that you paid somebody for.
Make sure you grab your.
Now, what we need to do is finish four, and we've got five, and we've got six. Let's get through that and decide how we are going to proceed, because I tell you, when my cell phone says 1:59, I'm going to wish you well. And not because I have to go anywhere, but because you need to go somewhere. Okay, so we're on improved public safety. This is number four. Now, this is for clarifying comments, okay? So we'll start with you, Councilmember Robinson. Look at the list. Can you see it?
Uh, okay. Um, so, isn't our process, we read it all first?
I can do that, yeah.
And then we add things that are not there?
Yeah, I thought, maybe if you could see it, okay. Uh, so we have four items, infrastructure, capital needs, increased sidewalk repairs, road repairs for safety, implement community crisis response program. Those are the four that you have under improved public safety.
So I would like to add.
Clarifying comments.
Not clarifying, I would like to add something that is not there.
Well, but I thought you were gonna add, first, talk about anything that's not clear.
Then I have nothing to say about.
Okay, anything that's not clear. Anybody? All represented? Councilmember Robinson, back to you.
Okay, so I would like to add, putting on here, um, a, a public safety center slash, you know, police department. I think we can't lease forever, and I, I say public safety center because a part of this, and I wanna make sure this is captured, is that we have a lot of, um, neighbor-to-neighbor disputes that happen in the city, where people are doing evil things to each other, and we don't have, like, a restorative justice practice around that, and we just call the police. And I think that when I was, I was talking to, um, Chief French, like, we could co-house within this public safety center other approaches to public safety besides police and fire. So I really wanted to capture it as a public safety center that includes police station, but it also houses other things like restorative justice and other efforts.
Okay, so we need to add restorative justice underneath that, and what else? We're just capturing words right now, but I wanna make sure.
Do you want me to add it like?
It's part of the public safety center.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
What else?
I think.
Did I get it?
I think my primary things are there, so I'm gonna leave it, 'cause I think other people will capture.
Okay, but check it as we move along.
Yeah.
We'll come back. Okay, we're, we did the clarifying, so is there something that you wanna add?
Oh, yeah. So I wanna add that, um, just kinda like, in the infrastructure, infrastructure capital needs, that, uh, we are clear about implemented, implement the 18 projects voted by council to address street safety or calming. Um, I would like also that, uh, we allocate more money to really go down to that list and implement all the projects, and that we include art, proj, uh, art as a way to, um, eh, dealing with street safety as well, like, um, like, for instance, um, the asphalt rope, uh, uh, that, um, people are talking about, or other, um, art projects that enhance public sa, eh, street safety. Um, yeah, I would like also to impart of, um, to continue support and increase the support for alternatives to police, like the Office of Neighborhood Safety, and alternative to police, to conflict resolution, where we know that the calls that people are making are no, um, are no, uh, precisely, uh, needed, uh, as one officer to deal with, and in, and, and, and the other thing is, um, work in collaboration of, so, with the county, um, to support more, um, these alternatives as well.
To support more alternatives to?
To policing and, and, in regards to, um, issues that, uh, our community are dealing that, uh, we know don't need, uh, a lot of police response, but needs other, um, responses, like when we are. don't need a lot of police response, but needs other responses, like when we are saying, implementing community crisis response program is to, to deal with mental health. So, I just went on because you wanted, so, but it's just kind of like more that. And then, the other thing related to that is just that we continue, as we have been doing it for over 15 years, to reimagine public safety, to make sure that our communities are having, are receiving the adequate services that they are asking for. And these adequate services are include, includes some restorative justice and other alternatives. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So, I know Councilmember Bana is going to bring this up, but I just want to bring it up as well. Wildfire safety plans. We need, I'm working with one group, I know she's working with a couple others, and this is to come up with a regional plan, MOUs, throughout the region. So, wildfire safety plans, implement them. And the other thing I wanted to say under public safety is reduce pollution and flaring from Chevron, so we need to always keep on top of that and get them to do better.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Mr. Mayor, do you want to go now, or you want to wait?
No, just one, one thing, to provide emergency shelter for the unhoused during crises. You know, for instance, when we had the pouring rains, and, and part of that would be tying, having closer ties to the county to make sure they do their fair share in, in helping us do that.
Emergency shelter for the unhoused, especially during emergencies, the crises, the national, natural disasters, et cetera.
Reduce pollution.
Oh, what, did we get it wrong?
And flaring. Reduce pollution and flaring the population.
Oh, don't read that, don't read that. That was a Freudian, that was a Freudian slip. We're not going to do that, we're not going to do that. That's not consistent with our public safety plan. Okay. Councilmember Spader. Our scribe is tired, too. You think you're tired. This is hard work. Okay, Councilmember Spader.
All right. Give us, we do sit on the fault line, so I want to make sure that we start planning in case of an earthquake. What do we do with our community? What plans do we have for communities that might be stuck somewhere? How do we evacuate Point Richmond, for example? How do we make sure they catch a fire on the hills? We need to come up with a plan, as a citywide plan, to prepare for earthquakes. Providing mental health services to both our community, but also our staff, especially our police and fire. Make sure that we're fully staffed for police and fire, to be able to provide these emergency services. I'm gonna slow down a little bit there, I think.
Yes, make sure we capture it.
Oh, she's got, oh, perfect, all right. I didn't see that. Sea level rise. Make sure that we start, I think it's captured other places, too, but this is public safety. Be prepared for that. How do we build the next Richmond with that in mind? Community policing, making sure that we continue that. I brought this up earlier, but it's the red light cameras and other safety cameras, increasing the safety cameras we already adopted, maybe adding some more, but also looking into the red lights. That might decrease people running them and hopefully slow them down. Looking into runabouts and raised crosswalks. Clearing storm drains, that was a big issue in my communities. Paving, lighting, fire, police substations, air monitoring, or increased air monitoring. Again, train crossings. We have a lot of trains that block our community, and the communities will end up getting stuck on the other side without being able to leave. Like Parkchester, there's only one way in, one way out. If the train's blocking them during an emergency, that community cannot leave. Same thing for Point Richmond. If the trains are blocking, they are not able to evacuate. Sideshow, they cause harm to our community in many different ways. Sidewalks, and a hospital.
I think some of those were captured earlier, but, yeah, we'll make sure we get everything. Is that it?
That is it, thank you.
Councilmember Spader.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. I would like to add, I would like to first emphasize staffing, because both police and fire are emergency responders. We live in an area that has 75% chance of a magnitude seven earthquake, and we have many pipelines under the city, hazardous material, and fuel, and jet fuel and everything, so it's very important to have full staffing for fire and police departments. But emergency preparedness comes at different levels. So, the city has prepared in terms of the departments. We need to have public shelters, and we need to have the community ready. So, we need to have cert classes. We have no budget for that, for community, public emergency preparedness, it's very important. We need to have places for the community to get together after an emergency, like, it doesn't even have to be a shelter where they can charge their cellphones, where a helicopter could land. That's another reason why I am asking the city to spend money to buy a property for a park in District Four. It works as a park, also as a place for gathering, not regular social gathering, that, too, but also post-disaster gathering. We don't have such a place there. It's very important. I think we need to strengthen neighborhood councils and make sure all communities have block captains that work closely with the police department and the fire department. We need to increase community policing, along with emergency preparedness through such We need to make sure all the fire access lanes are accessible. We need a new police department building, because the current police department is rented, so we don't know if it's gonna even last through an earthquake or not. And just imagine, if a major earthquake happens and the police department collapses, so we need to think long-term about that, that's very important. I would like to ask for keeping in mind that all the infrastructure we do is with, with the direction of, or with keeping public preparedness in mind. For example, we're building a library, let's make sure it's going to be a public shelter. It will have solar panel, it will have a helipad, so, how do you say that? Infrastructure towards providing public shelters. And talking about public shelters, I agree with the mayor that we need to have shelter for the homeless, and I think we need to have shelter for the homeless at all times. Many, 60% of the fires in the city are triggered by the homeless. We need to move them away from the wildfire area into shelters. I would also like to say that I consider violence against women a public safety issue. We need to have shelters for women and children as well. Talking about air monitoring, reducing pollution, I think we need to have active air monitoring in the city. Right now, there are many air monitoring systems, but they're passive. Nobody, you know, watches them, there is nothing to trigger a public warning system. We need to have active air monitoring, and also, we need to enhance our public warning system. Do we know if a leak happens at the refinery, what's gonna happen? Are we gonna be informed? Is there going to be a public warning system? No idea, so we need to enhance and test our public drills. I mean, we need to do drills to enhance and test public warning systems. Finally, I would like to suggest a lobbyist to, for example, make policies with regards to train safety. It's decided at the federal level, we cannot do anything at the city level. We need to make policies about wildfire safety, for example, subsidize insurance. So, I think having a lobbyist is not a bad idea, along the line of economic development and everything, and public safety. It was just a highlights, I could go on and on, but I spare you from the rest.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Willis, anything to add to this list?
Only a couple things, I pretty much agree with what folks have already listed out. The thing that didn't get mentioned is just figuring out holistic ways to deal with human trafficking that isn't criminalizing victims. And also, the only thing I will add, we don't have to add it to the list, but I do believe that the job training and job safety and youth training programs is another version of public safety in and in itself, so I just wanted to name that, but nothing else to really add besides the human trafficking issue.
Thank you very much. Now... I think Councilmember Robinson, Menes, thank you for keeping the order.
Thank you. I would like to add that we do the implementation of the project suggested in the local race safety plan, and particular, local road safety plan, LRSB, which is in our safety street website. And particular, like, and particularly, I would like just name some of the areas where street calming is needed, along Barrett Avenue, Esmond Avenue, Matbri, and McDonald Avenue, and there are some intersections there that, because, like, the community has been really vocal about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. I think, Councilmember Robinson, you have a quick clarifying comment?
Yeah, question, what is road?
The local road safety plan is a plan that was done by a consultant last year, and it was approved by the city council, and what they did was to look at collusion data and other data to look into what sites were more dangerous in terms of street safety.
Before we go to Councilmember Robinson, the question did come up in some of my conversations with you, particularly the newer members of our council, that we have a lot of plans that we refer to, comment on, and they say they've never seen them, they don't even know what's in them. So, we need to put those together, make sure that all of you have them, and for those of you who have not participated in those prior discussions, calendar those, not all in the same evening, so that at least you have the highlights, so you know where we've been and what's in the plans, because I heard that from more than one person. Councilmember Robinson.
Just a little side note, I've been reading a lot of those plans and thinking that we have great plans, but we're not...
With action.
Exactly. We're not always operationalizing those plans, or even remembering what the goals were. So, I wanted to roll back and make sure that I capture this one public safety thing really clearly, and that is, when I talked about the need for a public safety center, I want to expand it to be, not just building a police department, but I wanted to not lose the fact that I'm actually also proposing the potential, either a new program or of services that would be provided by, you know, non-s sworn officers, or an expansion of the, of the program that's being developed right now around non-emergency calls. And that is this restorative justice service, and that's different than the response to the non-emergency calls, because that, 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 like, de-escalates an acute situation, right? And what I'm talking about is chronic situations, disputes between neighbors where they're, you know, killing each other's animals, and, you know, threatening violence and things like that. And currently, the only answer is to call the police, and if no one has actually done anything physically, you know, committed a crime, and, you know, with no, with that, without community policing, there is no, there is no solution. People just go on tormenting each other until there is violence, and then they, and then there's action. So, I want to do something that's preemptive, that's, you know, before that, and that is kind of starting a restorative justice center practice program that would address these kinds of disputes before they get to the point where a crime, a crime has been committed. It's one of the things we hear a lot from as councilmembers.
One addition, if I could, on one of the things. So, on the implementation of the local road safety plan, please add Carlson. I started talking about this at the council meeting. A woman, a pedestrian, was killed with a hit-and-run two months ago, and there have been several accidents since, so that's a real high priority.
All right. Any other comments, comments on four? We've got five and six, and it is 1:29, I think, and we're gonna end at exactly 1:59.
Did we, did we capture that restorative justice center comment?
You put restorative. One of the things that's happening, that you probably can't see...
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, it's, it's, yeah. I can't read what's on the wall.
Yeah, she's, she's typing a lot faster than we're writing here.
Yeah.
It's on the screen. Yeah, you can't see that, Councilmember Robinson. And actually, I just realized about 10 minutes ago, that Latonya, La, Jesus.
LaShonda?
LaShonda is transcribing on a computer, and she's keeping absolutely up with you. And it's harder to do it here, that way.
I'm sorry, I missed something on public safety, and that's fuel reduction assistance. It's essential. Number four?
Yes.
Fuel reduction assistance. It's very important to reduce the wildfire danger by reducing fuel.
Yeah, fuel reduction.
Thank you. That's dead treasonous.
All right. Okay, before we move on, some of you know this, but maybe not all of you. I was the city manager at the time of the Oakland Hills firestorm, and at the time of the Loma Prieta earthquake. I resigned before the pestilence. I've had a lot of experience with these major disasters. The Oakland Hills firestorm, 3,500 substantial homes. These are 2,500, 3,500 square feet, 500 apartment units, and 25 people dead. When Loma Prieta hit, it damaged West Oakland tremendously. Forty-two people were buried under that rubble. So, I would urge you to pay attention to this wildfire protection stuff. There's a lot of stuff out there, there's a lot of experience. Oakland primarily, Berkeley to some extent, but Oakland overwhelmingly went through it. It was the largest residential fire since the Chicago Fire, the 1800s. So, I've been there. Okay. Pay attention to it. All right, we're on five. Now, remember what we're doing. Any quick clarifying comments, and then anything to be added? I'm gonna go from right to left, because my politics tend to sway in a different direction, so I'm gonna have to change it. But it doesn't mean where you sit, it's just that I have to remember to go left to right, right to left. Jerry Brown said that the way you govern best, he said, you paddle a little bit to the left, a little bit to the right, and keep focused on the center. Councilmember Willis.
No, actually don't have anything to add.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Bana.
I would like to ask for transparency of emergency service providers on our website. For example, residents need to see where the fires happened, what caused it, where crime happened, see it on the map, so you know what's going on in your neighborhood. And then, as the city council, we can come up with better solution and policies, looking at what things, how things happen. In general, I think our website needs a facelift.
You had that on your list, and you failed to mention it. I read what you put down. You had that on your list. Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Making sure that we look at our IT infrastructure, that we are ready in case there is a cyber attack, like the city of Oakland just had one. So, making sure that we are ready in case of that. Other for infrastructure, adding a department that will focus on transportation and electrification of the city. And making sure that all of our internal systems talk to each other, from payroll to benefits, that we're all automated, that it's all online, that it's going to help us get rid of paper, so we can save some trees, but automation will work. So, again, if you have... So again, if you have payroll benefits, you have the way that we hire, the way that we move people over to new positions, but also bringing in the external piece that they connect. So if somebody is applying for a permit for a business, how is that going through the internal systems, that every department that needs to touch it touches it and it moves forward? Also looking at the, I lost my train of thought there, both the business permits, that that moves forward along correctly. Also, when people use our city app, that people are fully trained internally on replying to those. I know sometimes they get stuck somewhere in the process, and we don't close them out, but how do we close out? If people are using the city app to report an issue, how do we make sure that all the reports are ran correctly, and that we, again, close it for what the mayor was mentioning earlier, that accountability?
All right. Ms. Mayor, we're gonna give you the last word. Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
So one thing, and this goes under filling staff vacancies, which I know you have as a bullet point, and I want to make sure that we provide another staff person for the environmental manager. I don't know what we have in there, but I know Samantha has a lot on her plate, so I want us to consider staffing the environmental division a bit better, so that's one thing. Another thing is, this is all with our processes or our internal infrastructure, we need to have another meeting to discuss our rules and procedures, and I know I had a chance to just touch on this with Henry and also with our city manager, and Henry seems to think we need like an eight-hour day to look at rules and procedures.
Think about what you did today.
So maybe, yes, so maybe we could, June 27th was a date that was suggested for, which is a general study session meeting, but if we could have it to, and we could discuss this in next steps, but to maybe finish tying up this thing, ranking them, whatever, and then go into discussing rules and procedures, a suggestion.
And the eight hours was much more than rules and procedures. It was also, if I might, I am not looking for any business, let's be real clear about that, so you should select the facilitator that works best for you. But what I suggested as part of that process is that you have discussion, you know, I've been observing the council, that you have a discussion about what you need and expect from the mayor, and what the mayor needs and expects from you in order to be successful. And you have a discussion about what you need and expect from the senior management team, and what they need and expect from you to be successful. It's a lot more than just talking about your rules and procedures. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I think like that, I second that part of the rule and procedures, I think like there is an important thing about, kind of like, really making sure that we know what is the things and documentation that is needed, that is provided to not only the city council, but to the public, so right decisions are made with right information and in a timely manner. I am going to, so I will, so in terms of the goal, I think like, one thing that was kind of like named was strengthening city internal infrastructure to improve services and workplace environment. So I will think that that kind of like be captured as kind of like the name of the goal, the overall goal. Strengthening city internals infrastructure to improve services and workforce, workplace environment. And with that, I will say that one of the things is just to support the IT department, so the website and how online services are more friendly user, so people can access and pay the services or access to any information. And I know like, for instance, that talking to some, some folks, we need to get a system that is supported by the cloud and so forth, so that part. Then I think in the, in the HR realm, I think like having a comprehensive annual performance review for all staff, and we just talked about procedures, but implementing procedures that are clear on how to hire, promote, or put staff in work plans is also important, so we, everybody knows what is the expectation and what are the procedures in that. I think like property, proper staffing in all departments, and particularly the ones that could potentially bring revenue, for instance, the poor, inspections, and so forth. Creation of the grant department as well as, as part of bringing more revenue, but I will add that the creation of a grant department to not only apply, but administer and support implementation and compliance of grants. So it doesn't kind of like just fall under the director of each department, because they are already really stretched, stretched to thing with all the other tasks that they I would like also to see like, as, as we talk about the, all the plans that we have, that we have really an analysis of how we really operationalize all the plans that we have been approved or past council have approved, so we need to know like, for instance, the master, the plank, the parks master plan, what had we achieved, what we, we still have no achieve, and what had changed, what needs to change because the conditions and the time had changed for us to do that. I think, I will be back, but I think this is, this is my thing. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Robinson.
Try to be as quick as possible. I have plus ones to so many things, and I'm not going to repeat them, so just know that I support many of the things that I just said. And I would like to make sure that all departments are regularly updating Transparent Richmond. I think that's a great resource, but if people don't put the information on it, it's not a great resource. The next one is, in terms of budgeting, I think that we need to include all capital projects that are intended to be started, not just completed within the capital project timeline, in the capital project plan, budget, so that we can plan for, you know, any surpluses or anything in it, and apply it for projects that are in the queue. I do think that we need a complete staffing analysis to make sure all departments are properly staffed. That includes both if we have too many positions, you know, allocated, as well as not enough positions allocated, and then have proactive hiring strategies that consider leaves, retirement, as well as the length of time needed to hire, especially in departments like public safety, which have extraordinary lead times. I feel like the way that we're hiring right now doesn't take into consideration the extraordinary lead times that are necessary to train, to train in some departments, and so there's like a net negative, we're always, we're always behind. So maybe we need to reconsider, reconsider that and include that in the staffing analysis. And then one other thing wasn't mentioned. So this is one of the things that I think I wanted to just add to this meeting that is proposed for council around expectations and whatnot. I want us to include the amount of time we request from staff to answer our questions and inquiries, like, we need to put it together, some kind of a process to, that recognizes that staff only have so many hours in a work week, and that they have regular jobs. We also have information that we need, so we need to put some kind of process together that, that makes it so that folks can do their work and we can get the information we need, but maybe not in the volumes that we're currently requesting.
That's one of the things that I would suggest you take up at this meeting.
And that meeting, I just want to add it to that list.
Oh, yes, so we don't lose it.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, yes. No, thank you very much, Councilmember Robinson. Okay, we're on, which, list five?
May I add one thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Bana.
I would like to start with a preamble. I'm a team player, I love teamwork, I get positive energy from people around me, from collaborating with them, I love people, and my, the efficacy, efficiency in work is just enhanced by people around me. So I strongly believe in teamwork, I'm very glad we're building a team at the city council level, and I strongly believe we need to do team building with our department heads. I think it's essential for the city, for their efficacy, for their working, work ethics, whatever it is, to build teams. So I would like us to increase the trust, working relationship and team building, acknowledging the hard work they do, appreciate the work, and just shed light on their achievements and the good things they do, and show the people of Richmond that we are working as a team, the city council, the staff, and especially department heads, city manager, everyone. I think it's important to establish, to make sure we can have progress in any of those areas. We need to do policymaking, not micromanaging them. We should not undermine them, we should just give them direction, support them, push them if needed, expect more from them, keep them accountable, but with good working relationship. At the end of the day, we're all humans, and we have certain capacity, and to be productive, we need that positive energy around us. So I'm asking everyone, let's keep the positive energy up, if you can put it in an item, please do.
That's your next, whenever your gathering is.
Yeah.
Expectations of each other across the board. The work only gets done if there is mutual trust and respect. That has to happen, or you will not be successful. I've been at this for a long time, not facilitating, doing it.
Can I add one more bullet point completely different here? Improve IT, IT, IT technology and potential hybrid meetings for commissions and boards.
I think there is an amen from the gallery back there. Yes, there is an amen back there. Okay. Anything else on item five? Can we go to six?
Just want to make sure, I can't remember if it was already stated, but this is another IT thought, and that is, you know, making sure that we're using the best technology, the most appropriate technology for all the departments. I think that that's come up in different ways, that, you know, we could make some advances and get people some more modern tools to use in various departments across the city.
The choir is still singing. Yes.
Yeah, I, I just kind of like, along that way, I would like to see if we can improve, just kind of like have the meetings translated. We just started with the REM program. We appointed a monolingual Spanish speaker, and this has been great, I think like we are going to be one of the first ones in the country to do that, and with 10% of the population being man, like 13% of the community here is monolingual speakers, and 10% of them are Spanish speakers, so I think like addressing that and to have more language access in every meeting will be important.
Okay. All right. Is there no further comments?
There are further comments.
I'm sorry?
For instance, Melvin has his hand up.
Well, I'm, I'm working from the left now. If you are the right, you're sitting the wrong side of the room. Back over here.
Agree with a lot of the things that was previously said, but one thing that came up for me and Councilmember Robinson actually touched on, but I, at some point after the budget gets adopted, I would actually want to understand like what the day-to-day operations of staff actually looks like outside of the issues that we bring forward to them. Like, I think having an understanding of what staff is currently working on, so we can know where the capacity is would be helpful. So some sort of presentation about what are you working on right now, and what's taking up your week, your month.
Very good question and very good comment, and very necessary for you to hear. Okay.
And now, if I might?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Remember, no, 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 no. You have forgotten what Jerry Brown said. I steered a little to the left, I steered a little to the right, but he said...
What did he say? Thank you. You end up in the center. So I want to say that I am both amused and excited by the enthusiasm of the city council, and I think that this enthusiasm, this, this, this enthusiasm that you have is making us a better council. All of you have many, many comments to say, and you are more than eager to share them, and I appreciate that. But aside from that, I want to say that the council has passed a lot of items, and somehow the ball gets dropped because there's so many other items coming towards staff. So, so I think in terms of, of moving forward, we need to find some way to keep those balls up so that everyone is aware of what has passed, what needs to be done, and, and, you know, how much, and it goes back to what, what Melvin was saying, you know, we need to know the workload that staff has, you know, just out of everyday items, plus the items that we bring onboard. So finding some way to monitor all the items. The other thing is, I, I know that a lot of information is not digitized, and I've, I've seen instances in which people are actually going through paper files when all, if it was digitized, they would just touch a button and, and it would be there. So, so I think that's another thing in process that we need to consider. And then I would love to see an omnibus, omnibus for, for the public, so that when they call, they don't get lost in this endless, endless telephone tree and end up being hung up on, so they have to call again. So if we had someone that they could call, who could direct them to the proper staff or department, so it would be streamlined, that would be much appreciated by me and by the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I do a time check? Will somebody look at their?
1:51.
It's 1:51, we have nine minutes. We have another sheet to bring up here.
Yeah, could we, could I start with the shoreline, because maybe I just really have two things, and maybe others are just fine with it, or maybe they have more to add, but since I added this on, it'll go real quick for my two things. Shoreline issues and ecological sustainability. Number one, moving Point Mulatti forward with the Park District. And two, consider a shoreline resiliency inventory plan of some sort. And I'm going to bring an item this summer about that, so just consider a shoreline resiliency plan.
And you put that in, when you and I talked, we talked about that again.
Yeah.
I didn't put every single thing you mentioned.
Right, right.
But you did today. You put every single thing you mentioned.
I think so.
And some that you didn't mention. Now, the question is, given this, when do you plan to reconvene? So you can do the other part.
Soon.
Silence.
June 27.
City clerk, silence.
Actually, um...
Yeah, when are we going to reconvene? So we can now go through these and prioritize them, categorize them, and start developing some, you've already put lots of objectives and strategies under here, so you've done a lot of that work. But this is part one for where we're ending up right now. Yes, Councilmember?
This might be to the city manager. I know that you're, you've been working hard on the budget. If we were to meet again, let, I'm just making up a date, next week, and we give you new guidance, is that going to mess up everything in the budget, or are we looking at this for the following budget? Like, where, where's, where are we in the process? How much can we put in before we have to reset everything and then potentially push the budget back? I see Movin over there. I just want to make sure that we, as we prioritize the next meeting, that we take into consideration what has been done, what needs to be done, do we have enough time, et cetera, et cetera.
I think for, for that same reason, I think like a good time for us to reconvene and...
what has been done, what needs to be done, do we have enough time, et cetera, et cetera.
I think for, for that same reason, I think like a good time for us to reconvene and have some discussion and prioritization. It could be, it's not, it's late, but this is where we are. But we don't meet on June thirteenth, it's a Tuesday. So I propose that we do this special like meeting on June thirteenth, that's Tuesday, to go through the prioritization. And probably some of these could be something that we, like, I think like pushing to this fiscal year some part and then in the other and the next fiscal year or so.
So the suggestion is to continue this on June thirteenth?
Yeah.
Is consensus around that?
Six thirty.
And, and, and thank you, but I want to see what the city manager says too.
City manager, yes.
See, she's got any comments or thoughts, just that I can take that into consideration too. And I agree with June thirteenth, I think that could be good.
Thank you. If the city council would like to adopt their budget on June twentieth, which is what staff is proposing, I would suggest that we can enable the city council to adopt a budget on June twentieth with the understanding that in order to operationalize some of these items, it would necessitate that we make additional refinements in quarter one. And so that it would be a two-step process because given where we're at today, and I want to be thoughtful about that we're, we're finalizing negotiations of MOUs. And so when that process is completed, that will enable you all to have more accurate projections. And so I would suggest that we need to move in an iterative manner. Thank you for asking the question.
Does that answer your question?
I doubt it.
I put a chart in front of you for a very decided reason. If you look at this chart, this is illustrative of what's happening across the city organization. This is a chart of the finance department.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Is this something, like because this is a public meeting?
Oh, this is a public meeting? Oh, you can look at this, it's already been published.
So I think like it's for the, it's for the public who is watching and looking.
Yes, they should, oh, they should hear it. I'm doing it for a decided reason. Shasa asked me to try to help the finance department with some overall management issues because the director of finance position is vacant. The administrative analyst position is vacant. The budget administrator position is vacant. The budget analyst under the budget administrator is vacant. Under general accounting, the accountant too is vacant. Under payroll, the payroll manager is vacant. Under revenue, the accounting assistant too is vacant. There is a 23% vacancy rate in the finance department. People in finance and across this organization, I can say it because you can fire me, they are drinking from a fire hose. They are drinking from a fire hose. And they are not going to tell you this because they don't want to sound like they're complaining. But people are dancing as fast as they can. The other thing I would tell you about this list, one-third of the people who are in these positions have been here for less than two years. I just put all that out there for you to hear it and understand when you make requests of the staff, they're not ignoring you. It's not because they think it's unimportant. They're dancing as fast as they can. I've seen it. Okay. Okay. Yes.
Are we back to trying to find a date?
Yes, we are.
For our next meeting.
So June thirteenth?
I can do the thirteenth.
I can do the thirteenth, actually.
The other date was the twenty-seventh that was thrown out. I don't know, I didn't quite hear everything the city manager said, I'm sorry, but maybe that's not the best.
Can I, instead of calendaring right now, I think maybe we can calendar offline, but I wanted to add and kind of ask, in the work that we've done today, it's great and I feel like it's, some of it is very duplicative and we could actually consolidate and we can better articulate things. I wonder if we could do, if there is a ad hoc committee or some kind of group that could help do that work between now and then, so when we come back, we don't come back with just these lists. We definitely maintain the list, so no one gets anything dropped. But we propose, present a consolidated kind of list of, of objectives underneath these goals. And, and so we come in at a, at an advanced place.
Henry, would it be helpful, and is the city council available to meet weekly until this is, until this is done? So then that way we could move expeditiously.
If the council can meet weekly?
Yes, until this is finished.
Until this is done? And how much time would you be dedicating to that if you're meeting weekly? It's just a question, it's rhetorical. Yes, Councilmember Robinson?
I'm willing to meet weekly. A couple of comments though, if we can make them later in the day, twofold, some of us have other jobs, but also so the public, I know they can listen to it later, but it's not the same as if they were actually here. I know they can't participate, they can't give us comments, but it'd be great if they're able to show up, but we're ultimately making goals for them as well.
Actually, they can give you comments and that was one of the comments I made about recording this meeting because number one, many of your constituents work during the daytime, many of you do too. And so this is an official meeting of the council, needed to be recorded, but I agree with your comments, later in the afternoon, early in the evening would be more accommodating of the general public, but that is your call. We've got one minute left. Councilmember McLaughlin.
Okay. So I'm happy to meet every, every week, which means our next meeting would be next Tuesday, which we ordinarily would have off because it's the fifth Tuesday of the month. I guess it's May 31st. So we would meet May 31st, then June 6th, then June 13th, then June 20th. And hopefully we would have those two extra meetings would help us get to where we want to go and I'm good with that.
Okay, but there is consensus now to meet on June, what's the first date?
Thirteenth.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a comment from the public and you are.
Before we go.
No, I'm not going there yet. I'm just reminding you because it's a public meeting, we have a comment from the public. I've got it. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I wanted to say that on our agenda for tomorrow, we are hoping to have the last two meetings in July off. So if we're going to do that, we absolutely must meet as much as possible until then.
Before July?
I, I just want to ask that there is some inclusive calendaring as we go forward so we can make sure to get as many council members as possible, not just going for quorum. This is a really important topic beyond other topics. It's really important that is, that we're all at the table. So please, please don't just throw out a date and like if you can't make it, too bad.
No one's done that.
Okay, and I think, that's a very good comment and I agree. Everybody needs to be present. I'm going to press you because we made a commitment that we're going to end at two. You do have, I think, one speaker from the public, maybe. Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, and it's your call. But I think there's a comment from one speaker, is there?
Yes.
Let's hear it.
Jim Baker.
All right. And Mr. Mayor, you set the time that a speaker has to speak.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay. This should work, yes. Honorable Mayor and members of the Richmond City Council, my name is Jim Becker with Richmond Community Foundation. It's a pleasure to be here today. I appreciate seeing everything on here. That's going to help us as your community foundation, think about how we better serve the community as well and, and kind of work our assets and our resources to best meet these needs. I want to talk a little bit about housing because that's the one we've been most involved with. I want to, as you think about this, think about this, the, the things you've already put into process. One of them is rental assistance. As you know, during December and January, we put out about 300,000 in rental assistance in partnership with the city and others. And that served 60 residents, but we still have 42 on the waiting list. So as you think about allocation, particularly ARPA and other resources, think about putting money back into the rental assistance pool. We'd, we'd appreciate that, to be able to serve folks. Also, you know, Housing First launched and we've been a partner with you in that as well. We're very excited about that. We have 12 folks placed already in housing, two of which have received full-time employment, one of whom, a woman in her 30s, this is the first job she's ever had in her life. So this stuff is working and I don't want you to forget about it as you think about budget allocations and everything that go along with this because it's important to support the things you're already doing that are successful and keep those moving forward. And since I was given two minutes, I'll just share one very quick thank you from a resident. So here's the testimonial. When I reached out to the rent assistance option, I was packing my one-bedroom apartment up and on the verge of being evicted with my nine-year-old son. The pandemic hit me hard and I was overwhelmed by the lack of funds and I was in a very dark place mentally and financially. I received the rent funds and it was exactly what I needed to get my head above water. I'm tremendously appreciative and thankful for this program, the city of Richmond and everyone that was part of supporting me and my son keep our housing. Please continue to support the community in this way and God bless you all. And that is from a resident that received rental assistance. So again, as you go forward and think about the resources you have like ARPA and other funding, think about the stuff you've put in place that's working and please continue those. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's a very high note to end on and you have the final word.
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming and as I said before, the enthusiasm of this council is exhilarating. I want to thank all of you for being part of the process. I also want to thank staff for being here with us and for being open and sharing what you've shared. So I see us moving forward together as one unit and I really appreciate all of you. Love to everyone, the community also. Thank you for being here. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, sir.